I called in order of the town of Old Sabre.
Well, not yet. We're just letting people in.
She said recording in crowd?
I know.
First one. To Main Street, Old Sabre. Seated tonight, me, Bob Prudential Chair, and Mark Calderella Vice Chair, Jerry Lewis Secretary, regular commission members Mark Delmonico and Henry Thorson. Also present this evening are alternates Justin Turabili, Sandy Zizenzzo, and John Henry. Seated up here tonight, we have our consulting attorney, Matt Willis of Halloran and Sage, our zoning enforcement officer, Jos Costa, and our clerk, Joanne Gallin. And fifteen people in the audience, and eight. Good.
Nine online. Nine online.
Nine attending.
Virtually.
Twelve.
Virtually. Okay. First on the agenda is the regular business of minutes of our previous meeting, that being Monday, August fifteenth. Are there any additions or corrections to the August fifteenth minute? No. Not appearing? They have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented of Monday, August fifteenth.
Is there a second? Oh, Mark Delmonico, second Jerry Lewis's motion to approve the minutes of August fifteenth as presented. Any discussion all in favor of the motion to approve August fifteen minutes? If I by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. No extension, no opposed. Next on your agenda is the regular business. The correspondence. Do we have any correspondence other than related to agenda items?
None.
None. Okay. Next up is continued public hearings. Fine Fettle Dispensary. Application for special exception use for four thousand square foot adult use marijuana dispensary. Two thirty-three Boston Post Road, Deception Met forty-four, Lot eleven, Gateway Business, B four district. We had a previous session, meeting, public hearing. This is a continuation of that. We have presenting. Attorney Amy Felton. Yes, you have, we elected with three things that we requested an updated statement of use, particularly to reflect, it presented orally in terms of controlling the rate of visit. Location of bike rack. And the employee, that employee parking space, this would be shown in the plan.
Correct. We have submitted all those, and there was one more. We had access to reflect the correct hour cooperation on post signage. And so we submitted that plan as well. So all of those documents have been submitted into the record. Speaking of, I mean, suggestions for attorney for Fine Fettle on here tonight. So all those documents have been submitted into the record. We also submitted some additional documents that have been submitted through Chris, and I understand, posted to the town website, in particular, the letter of support we had from the mayor of the county of Wyndham. I have hard copies if anybody would like those. And then we also have a letter from Laz Parking, who is a parking operator, if you're familiar. A lot of the more public operations in Connecticut, Laz does a lot of parking management. We have a letter indicating that they would assist us with parking management if it became necessary here. Again, that was also submitted to Chris and posted on the website, but I do have hard copies if anyone is interested. If anybody still needs those, I can hand them out. But otherwise, then what we have for tonight is I have some comments and clarifications that have been based on extensive amount of public comment that we've received, as well as the letter that we received back from the police chief this afternoon. And then we also, as I understand it, someone from Harsley and Hanover will be here to talk about the peer review process, as well as what we've done in response to the questions about some supplemental traffic information. So with that, are there any other questions or procedural items? Otherwise, I would, I'll go through what would be my brief comments, and then we'll turn it over for the discussion about the peer review.
Okay. Questions? Proceed.
Okay, great. So what I wanted to start with was a couple of questions. I think there has been a lot of comment in the public letters and questions that we've seen with respect to this location as a dispensary. Just want to remind everybody and clarify for the public that this location was approved in two thousand and eighteen by this commission for a medical use dispensary. And that at that time, that was found to be an acceptable use. There was, there was no issue with respect to the, at least, medical portion of the cannabis legislation. And when the legislation adopted by the state last year, legalizing cannabis was adopted in Connecticut, you, like many other municipalities, went through the process of establishing a moratorium, evaluating where in town you might want to see recreational sales occur. With input from the Economic Development Commission with respect to the benefits that would be associated with the dispensary from the additional municipal tax that was put into play. And as noted in one of the letters, you are a little bit unusual in how you decided to pursue allowing that, oh, excuse me, allowing retail sales of cannabis in Old Sabre. Whereas a number of other towns identified particular zones where they thought the use would be appropriate. You identified two locations, acting in your legislative capacity, looking at all the issues that were involved. You identified two properties, this one and another one at five Custom Drive, and adopted those regulations specifically identifying those locations as the two places in town and thought would be appropriate for consideration for retail use, subject to special exception criteria. And that's what brings us here today, is the special exception and last month. But I do think it's important for the public to understand that this is not a new consideration, but that you went through a fairly extensive process to reach this conclusion about where retail sales should be allowed in town, with comment from your other consulting agencies and other individuals who commented during that process, because I think there's a misperception in some of the letters, that this was frankly, a little bit of a new idea, and not something that had been considered. So then, turning to a couple of issues that were raised specific to this application in the various public comments, and I think are important also for your consideration of how this use spits into not only Old Sabre, but to the larger scheme, because I think there are some concerns about traffic, sales, and the individuals or opportunities that may be prevented here. So one of the most important things is that there has been a representation, some of the letters, that we were going to have fifty registers. And that's without the benefit of seeing the plans and hearing us maybe in person. Frankly, there are fifteen, and we actually think that there are too many. As Mr. Zax noted during the last presentation, that is their, their business model, that they don't want anybody to have to wait from a customer service perspective. So we expect that most likely at a peak hour, and this is consistent with what you'll hear from a traffic perspective, that it'll likely be eight registers that are in use. Certainly nowhere, nothing like fifty proposed, nothing like fifty. That issue in the traffic. And we had also talked about questions about grand opening and peak traffic, peak number of transactions that were located based on expected sales in the surrounding area. What we had told you last time was maybe fifty-five. We actually looked at the numbers. What we've shown in our cap is probably closer to forty-five as a peak hour in the grand opening. And that is, again, as reflected in the traffic report you'll hear about, intended to be a peak hour. So there may be days, Saturday afternoon, Friday afternoon, as Mr. Zax described to you last time, where we have heavier customer usage, more people coming in to pick up something. And those would be those peak hours. We expect, as with many retail businesses, something like a Tuesday morning, a Monday morning, while most people might be at work or otherwise. Those are going to be off-peak, and we're certainly not expecting to have transactions anywhere near forty-five an hour. Included, and to represent or support that, included in the traffic materials, because that was part of the basis of the information and the peer review, we had included information from a weekend at the Martha Stewart, or excuse me, the Martha's Vineyard dispensary that Fine Fettle operates. We had provided these hour-by-hour sales data. It was something that Harsley and Hanover in their review had asked about. So we provided the recreational sales for that facility for a Thursday through Sunday in August, consistent with when we were doing the traffic counts. And that is consistent with, again, as I said, the peak hours that we are, we're representing and what we would expect in a similar seasonal community like Old Sabre. And with respect to the actual operation of the facility, there have been a number of comments about this being the first recreational, first and only recreational cannabis dispensary in the state of Connecticut that is entirely incorrect. The expectation from Fine Fettle is that, and with, with other operators, is that many of the current medical dispensaries, including Fine Fettle's location in Wyndham, those facilities are likely to convert to hybrid facilities. And so there are currently eighteen of those in the state of Connecticut that are strictly medicinal. If in fact, all of those convert to hybrid facilities, there would be an initial eighteen that are hybrid if all those converted. And then the expectation and publicly announced by the state of Connecticut is the, that they anticipate operating or issuing licenses for an additional twelve recreational facilities. So of which, we would expect this to be one. So rather than being the first and only in the state of Connecticut, it's likely that this would be one of probably twenty-five to thirty recreational dispensaries in the state of Connecticut as initially permitted. The state, you know, indicated that it's going to issue the initial round of permitting, and then we'll kind of evaluate from there. So with respect to those, if you were to think about the existing medical dispensaries, there is one in Groton that was noted in one of the public comment letters. There's a location in Branford, Montville, FFD's location in Wyndham, as I mentioned. So there are others in the vicinity that would likely also draw the, from this area of the state for their, for customers. And then I think the other thing that relates to state licensing or regulatory issues that was, that was referenced was that there was a comment about fifteen hundred-foot radius regarding advertising that relates to off-site advertising. I think as the zoning commission, you all know from, from your sign-up regulations or otherwise, that something onsite may be signed, but is not necessarily deemed off-site advertising, because it's identifying that this has a component. The fifteen hundred-foot limitation is related to true advertising. So we wanted, if Fine Fettle wanted to put up a billboard, that is where the fifteen hundred feet comes in. It does not come into play with respect to the reference to the daycare that's about five hundred feet away. Regular onsite business signs are not deemed advertising.
But just for your information, billboards are prohibited in Old Sabre.
Right. But to the extent that it was even anywhere, you know, I know there are other billboards in the vicinity, you know, along I ninety-five or something like that, those are still, those are the types of things that the state is trying to regulate within the fifteen hundred feet of daycares or schools or that sort of thing. So certainly, you're not the only community that doesn't prohibit, or that prohibits billboards, but that would be the kind of thing, even if it was somewhere else, that they're still limited to those, those geographic distances. I think the other, the other common thread in a number of the letters was that this was a predominantly cash business, and therefore there should be some sort of police presence or it would attract a criminal element, some sort of implication there. A couple of the letter writers noted that the Monkey Farm Restaurant here in Old Sabre is a cash-only business, and I think we, you know, sort of going about our day, forget about all the other cash businesses that come to mind. I think a lot of people in the area have probably been to Bills in Westbrook. Busy Saturday or Sunday. That's also a cash business. Loor and Haven, also cash business. You know, generally hear the outcry about those facilities or operations needing police presence simply because they're, they're cash businesses. I think the same is true here. People are coming in to purchase illegal products and simply paying with cash. And then I think the, the other element that, that is clearly at play is frankly, one that is a misperception, and it's a, it's a comment about the criminal element that will come to this facility, the demographics or nature of the people who will be the customers here. There was one letter writer, writer, letter writer who noted that most of our patrons are law-abiding citizens. They're making a choice to come to buy a legal product in a legal facility and frankly, paying a twenty-five percent tax for the protection and benefit of purchasing a legal product through that means. Analogously, it's a liquor store. You can't, there are a couple of key differences, though. If you want to go into a recreational cannabis facility, you can't bring your kids. There's nobody allowed under twenty-one in a recreational dispensary. So if I want you to go in and buy a bottle of wine, or if you wanted to go in and buy a case of beer, and you happen to bring somebody under twenty-one with you, you don't prohibit them. Not true in a recreational cannabis facility. Same thing. There is no, there are no displays of product in recreational dispensaries. Mr. Zax mentioned that last time. I don't know if anybody heard that detail. But again, I could go in and look at the various bottles of wine that might be available in a liquor store. Can't do that in a cannabis, recreational cannabis facility. If it's all the product, as he outlined last time, kept maintained in a secured vault that frankly, has stricter standards than a bank or pharmacy. So this is a highly regulated, highly secure product for people who are choosing, as I said, to partake in a legal product that state has deemed to be appropriate for, for adults. And then the last point on that is also, and again, Mr. Zax mentioned last time, there is a legal limit on the amount of recreational cannabis you can buy in a single day. That is checked by license in the computer system, as he outlined, and we included in our statement of use. There are a number of things, you know, various checkpoints. One of those is in fact confirming that you, as an adult, have not purchased your recreational cannabis allocation in a different location. So again, unlike liquor store, where I could go from store to store throughout Old Sabre or any other town, I can frankly drive throughout Connecticut, I am not allowed to do that with recreational cannabis. So it is a much more secure and regulated industry than frankly, the other common analogy of the, of the liquor store. And then I think, you know, someone, unfortunately, I have to spend some time addressing the comments that were submitted to the, to the commission from the police chief. Frankly, I was, I was quite surprised by them and disappointed. There were a number of allegations and claims of misrepresentation. And as the person who stood up in front of you, as Mr. Zax, as the person who stood up in front of you and claimed to have been making those misrepresentations, I'm frankly quite disturbed by that. I take my candor to you and every other commission as a member of the Superior Court, as an officer of the court, quite seriously. And I think that there have been a number of misrepresentations in his letter about what we've said, about where we've represented. So I just wanted, again, to go through a couple of those things. Most importantly, he stated that we only addressed an average number of customers of forty-four an hour when pressed by him. In fact, it's included in our initial traffic summary from June twenty-eighth. So that information of an average of forty-four customers an hour, forty-five, that range is in fact in our initial submission materials. He talks about the fact that we have been misleading about online appointments, and that Mr. Zax, who said information about walk-ins, and that's in fact also correct. We have represented to this commission that we would have online appointments only for the grand opening. Maybe here, maybe two, maybe three, depending on what the timing is, and as he represented, that maybe there would be the opportunity for walk-ins, but if they need to manage the facility via appointments, they would continue to do. So that, I think he was clear, but to the extent that there is any miscommunication, we one hundred percent accept that this would be a online-only sales through the initial grand opening peak. And as I said, as the state begins to operate or license other facilities, we expect that this will likely become just another retail use. And so there may not be the need for those kinds of appointment only, may permit some walk-ins. Again, may also depend on peak hour. Saturday afternoon in July might be very different from a Tuesday morning at ten-thirty. And so I think that would be the clarification. He suggested that our letter from Laz Parking Services was deceptive, and that no one would be permitted to direct, to direct traffic on Old Sabre roads except for the police department. Letter was pretty clear that Laz does parking management, and Fine Fettle has used them in other locations. They have in other towns, in check. We have represented that if in fact, there was the need for grand opening parking management, nothing about the town roads, parking management onsite, whether it was valet, flaggers, directing traffic internal to the site. Laz is somebody that is not only well-experienced, they run Mystic Seaport, they run the Yard Goat Stadium, numerous office buildings. They're the second-largest parking operator in the world. And so clearly, they have the capability of presenting and operating what would, what might need to be no different than a stadium emptying out at night, if we need to have traffic management internal to the site. There was no, no intention or statement that they would be managing or trying to supplement the police managing traffic on the Old Sabre roads. Second, they also related to traffic, as you'll hear from, from our traffic expert. He criticizes us for not having our traffic study account for incidents on I ninety-five. I can't predict when an accident's going to happen, and I don't know how, and you'll hear from Mr. Solomon, nobody can. And the state doesn't have any kind of mechanism to count I ninety-five. And it's frankly, a very unusual and pretty much unheard-of request to try and account for incidents that are unpredictable on I ninety-five. But he claimed that there was, there has been uncertainty or a lack of clarity about what we intended to do here for this facility, whether it was intended to be a medical facility, whether it was intended to be a hybrid facility, recreational, et cetera. Again, from day one, our statement of use stated May thirty-first, this is a recreational cannabis facility. It is not intended to be hybrid. It is not intended to be medical. That is completely, again, clear from, from day one. He, he goes on to explain the fact that he doesn't care what other towns experienced with, whether it was medical marijuana, recreational, because they're not Old Sabre, and they're not analogous. I think our point is that the, while Connecticut has not had recreational sales, there are other places in the vicinity that have had recreational sales, have the experience, have the knowledge and information that may be beneficial to him as the chief to address some of the questions he's raising to you as a commission. And in fact, Fine Fettle operates, as I said earlier, operates a facility in Martha's Vineyard, I think. Now, there was a letter, a letter writer who commented that the, no one would move to or visit Old Sabre if you allowed a recreational dispensary in, in Old Sabre. And I think there are probably some folks in Martha's Vineyard who would disagree that nobody's visiting them anymore about that. And they claimed that our statement about licensing was quote, premature, deceptive, and extremely poor taste, and implied that somehow we had inside information, we were somehow manipulating the state licensing process. And frankly, I think that's wildly unfair. And just to make the record clear, Fine Fettle was awarded its state license today. And so whatever representation he has made about it being premature, deceptive, I think was, was frankly inaccurate, and based upon Fine Fettle's knowledge about where it was in the application process, what information it was, it was required to submit, and how that would be addressed. And I think the last point with respect to the fire, excuse me, the police chief's comments, was that he tried to imply that our reference to fifty thousand dollars was an attempt to buy off him or this commission. And in fact, what you will remember, that the fifty thousand dollars is our statutory obligation. It was not a buy-off, it wasn't a payoff, it wasn't a threat, or whatever else he would like to characterize it as. But in fact, a statutory obligation of any applicant for recreational cannabis facility to recognizing that as new use, there might be some things like police overtime for traffic management on the public street that the town would incur. And state legislator's thought process was to ensure that the town did not incur those expenses on its own, but those would be borne by the applicant itself. So in fact, and I will reiterate, that fifty thousand dollars is in fact provided for in the statute, is available to any town in Connecticut, not just Fine Fettle offering it to Old Sabre, but to any town in the state of Connecticut who chooses to have a recreational facility and opening it up to those expenses. So with that, I think I will turn it over to, I'm not sure if we were going to go to our traffic engineer or Harsley and Hanover to go through what's been done to the last meeting. Happy to obviously address any questions or clarifications about what I said to, said to date. But otherwise, actually, maybe start with your traffic continuing.
I have a question. So we have a question. Would you answer some questions? Is it your procedures of whatnot these online sales, is it yours procedure or is that state mandated?
It's our procedure.
So you could change that any point in time, correct?
We, we could, but Ben, Ben can tell you a little bit more.
But I'm just saying, that's the rules, right? It's not state mandated. It's your decision to do that.
Correct. It's not state mandated. It is sort of the industry practice to manage, and what Fine Fettle's experience is to, to be able to, to manage onsite and frankly, customer experience.
And the same thing with your fifteen-minute scheduled time frames. That's your decision to do that, not state mandated to allow walk-ins, right? Is that what I understood? And then the other, the other question I have per se is, there's a lot of thinking that the town was going to financially benefit from the income of the sales. I was under the impression that it has to be earmarked for education. Is that true?
So, Ben, for the record, Ben Zax, Chief Operating Officer of Fine Fettle. So to the first two questions, yes, those are ultimately choices that we made operationally to best handle initial traffic, et cetera. In, I will say, in Martha's Vineyard, for example, we were, we had a special condition, a condition of our special use permit, Massachusetts special exception, special use permit, that we were required to be on appointment only, except for pre, except for pre-orders, actually. And then with COVID, it became online only, appointment only for everything. And so that was a special local condition that we then kept, but that is not a state regulation. That's something that we choose to do to be able to maintain traffic order consistency, et cetera. The time of those appointments is something that we deem and define based on how we can handle it in our data to get buffer time around the average transaction time, and then buffer to make sure that there aren't people congesting. So it's not one after the other, but we get time to do it, settle, go from there. And then the next person can come in as traffic moves out. And then the third one was around, around municipal taxes. So within the Connecticut structure of taxes, cannabis is, is taxed roughly twenty-three percent. Three percent of those taxes is earmarked for the town that you're in. I am not an expert on where the tax money within the town needs to go. I believe there's some differences between if there's a town that's in a disproportionate impact area, which Old Sabre would not be defined, and where they can allocate it. That's not a question I feel super comfortable specifically answering, how the earmarked three percent would go within either the general fund or towards education or towards other things in Old Sabre. So I want to answer that with the answer that I don't exactly know.
I will, to, to add to, to Ben, there are limitations on how.
With money to be used, that's why.
But I, and I had another town ask, or I looked at it. Um, but I, and I had another town asked, or I, I looked at it. I'm happy to get that to Attorney Willis or, or Chris. We can find statutory reference for you, but I do believe, I don't think it can go into the general fund as Ben said, in, in most municipalities. But there are a number of things, one of the other towns I was talking to, I think they, they thought it would supplement their parks and rec type budget or do.
It's listed in the statute how you can use it. But I didn't, I didn't bring stack of cannabis statues. I brought the zoning rights.
It's only three hundred pages.
I, I know.
We can, we can get that for you.
Anything else?
So the operational aspects described for Fine Federal operation, if approved, could be conditions under the special exception, exception approval. If you were granted one, so that you would have to employ those operational aspects to limit, regulate the frequency and turnover rates and visits. So with regard to the turnover, initially the statement of use said fifty-five per, per hour. Now it's forty-four? What, forty-five rather? How, how did your business shrink by so much?
That, that would be a peak hour. And frankly, that was, that was some of the things.
In the peak hour, it went from fifty-five to now forty-five. Is that totally due to operational aspects of rate, visit rate? Or, or was that, or was it, there's some other contributing factor to the reduction in the peak hour?
The, right. The fifty-five was frankly very conservative. That, that we were, as, as we were applying, sort of estimating what it would be, that was based on what, what the Zacks thought would be the sort of highest operation. As we got into the traffic questions and some of the things about specifically this particular location, how would it work? What the details were. That was when we started refining some of those numbers and what we thought was realistic. And that was why, although we said fifty-five, we thought that the range was, and I think it's in the, this.
The statement of view just had fifty-five.
Right. That, that was the peak. And then the traffic study went into a little bit more with a range, I think of thirty-five to forty maybe. And as we went back through and in some of the conversations about how we have managed appointments, that's the thing, is how we began to refine it, looking at frankly, some of the Martha's Vineyard numbers, which are consistent with, with that.
And ultimately, right, we can adjust numbers to sort of affect from five to ten minutes. We generally get people in and out after registering about, about three minutes and thirty-seven seconds, but um, but and then there's like sort of time. And so we can change it to a ten minute period if there's worries or conditions that we want to ensure that we look at around traffic. For example, in Martha's Vineyard, we used to have fifteen, they moved this to ten, and then they completely got rid of the appointment only in our last, in our last meeting. So we had sort of time that affected in the condition of the special permit that ultimately changed.
So controls like that could be incorporated into conditions for potential special exception.
Correct.
Approval, if there is one. With regard to the comparison to Martha's Vineyard, well, typical, the year round population of roughly ten thousand. What's the population on the island of Martha's Vineyard?
Fourteen, fourteen thousand. Well, two years ago it was fourteen thousand, post-COVID it's eighteen thousand, uh, full time. And then in the summer they get up to about a hundred thousand with fifty thousand of them there for the whole summer.
Right. And so the comparisons to Martha's Vineyard in terms of the, the numbers that you've given, were, were that, were those during the high season or if you want?
They were, they were, the second weekend of August, the dates are included in the traffic report and they are consistent with I'm looking for, but there is, but consistent with when we did the traffic counts as well. So the, there was.
Well, not everyone in Martha's Vineyard who's there in the high season has arrived by vehicle, because you've got to take a ferry to get there.
I should, I should clarify. The numbers, the, the numbers we provided for Martha's Vineyard are the same weekend in Martha's Vineyard.
No, yes. I understand the timeline, yes. But in Old Saber, if the highways that feed into Old Saber are Route nine and I ninety-five, Route one. They provide access from other places without the intervention of a ferry.
I see what you mean.
And Martha's Vineyard being an island and ferries being limited in their capacity and number of trips per day do not provide the same opportunity for vehicles to visit Martha's Vineyard.
Correct.
And so your comparison to Martha's Vineyard contains a restriction on the total number of possible vehicles.
Sure. So we created, so there, so I think what you're saying is Martha's Vineyard and Old Saber are not apples to apples, right? And so what we tried to include within the data, well, not, we tried to, but what we did include within the data is where we see on Martha's Vineyard in terms of just general demand of traffic. Yes, the number of cars that are on Martha's Vineyard and Old Saber, I have not done the specifics of the full traffic. Well, we did do one a few years ago for Martha's Vineyard, are not exactly the same. We also included our Newington numbers, which is our busiest store in Connecticut, which candidly, we actually believe our Newington Medical will be busier than this specific location. But so we tried to include a number of various sort of analogous chances, just to compare what operations look like, what traffic look like, what demands look like. To give a fuller picture of both a very busy medical store with, you know, not so many, not so, not a ton of patients, but quite intensive demand, as well as Martha's Vineyard, which is both a recreational and medical store actually in one, so it brings two levels of customer and more of a summer heightened season facility. Because that's the data we have, right? Those are our facility that we run. And so we wanted to give real time, real data in addition to the I T P traffic expectation data that's given through the traffic study. So, you know. I've been called, I've been called a number of things in general. I'm generally probably overly transferred, like I'll give you any data we have to give you. And that's really what we tried to do with what we sent out. Because I'm, you know, we understand that there are a lot of questions there. We understand that there's concerns. We understand that there's perception. We understand that there ultimately is reality. And the only thing that we can do is give as much information as we can. And so that's how we brought that information based on what we have to, can.
Well, the cannabis, the marijuana dispensary medical that was previously approved was approved for a smaller number of square feet in the building. And it would have generated fewer trips, fewer customers on a, on a daily basis, an hourly basis, a daily basis, an annual basis than cannabis dispensary adult use.
So, so my personal take on the initial application that had twenty-five to fifty cars a day, I think was what that initial one said in twenty eighteen. That's not a business that somebody could sustainably run, right? So I think those numbers were, were skewed. Our projections for this facility, and that's sort of all I can say is probably a fifteen percent reduction of what we're doing in our Newington store, Newington store now. Right? And that's how we've modeled out based on, you know, Chief Spire asked a few times about the reasonable catchment area and knowing sort of what competition is coming down the road, right? Because there's rotten slash New London, there's Montville. There's already a location approved in East Line. Westbrook did just put in a regulation. There is one in Bramford that was given adult use approvals recently. There's also a, an applicant in Middletown that was just approved and given a license. And so as we sort of modeled out our numbers, right, we, we sort of come into that. Those rough numbers that are fifteen percent decrease from where our Newington store would be, that sort of does on average, just to say thirty-seven point per transaction, the hours throughout the week. We, we can't hire, we have some hours that are lower and, you know. But we understand that not everything is like perfect and analogous, right? We are projecting a future. The thing that we can manage and handle is if we're going to do online and if we're going to do appointment only, which we think is just best for operations, especially at the beginning when people don't know. Is that we can curtail it and throttle it to the numbers that, right, are deemed appropriate ultimately. And from there, right, you understand what the demand can become or what the demand is and how that handles in terms of traffic and things. And so you know, one of the, if we're going to take silver linings from COVID, you know, for us, it's the expectation of a pre-order, there's an expectation of an order out, there's an expectation of using a system. And then, I will say that, you know, some people, because we've seen this as recreational sorts come, there will be people who are totally oblivious to what the product is, wanting to ask questions, wanting to answer questions. And so that's when we will do something of of an appointment that might expect more questions, right? And so that's why, you know, for example, originally, right? We, we generally plan for a five minute appointment, but in adult use, we felt especially with where some of the worries might be here. We could alter that to ten minutes because there might be more questions. And also to space out people or concerns of traffic. So there's not cars coming in at exactly the same time and then staggering the overtime. So those are the elements that we think about to plan for what is a projection and what is the ultimately unexpected. I hope that sort of gives explanation because this, there is definitely an imperfect science to demand in general, right? All businesses, I think, have that reality of projection.
The eventual number of retail sales and customers associated with them is determined by the density of the licenses distributed throughout the geography of, of Connecticut in this case.
Connecticut, Rhode Island, sure.
And you've mentioned approvals a couple of times. Do, do those approvals carry local addresses with them? Or does that help to the consumer protection board as the final, it goes here?
Sure. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things we don't know.
Right. I don't need to know about the.
So the approval process in the state.
I don't, I don't need to know about the approval process. That's somebody else evaluating. I just want to know if any of the approvals that you've mentioned so far have specific street addresses associated with them.
The ones that are already approved with specific street addresses are the current medical facilities that have a hybrid, that are converting to hybrid, right, which all would like to do, excuse me, which all would like to do. The other element of the state license when it is given is not given an address. And so that process is you're given a provisional license and then the company goes and gets approval and sinks it with an approval they've either already gotten or with an approval that they get over an eighteen month period towards getting their final licensure. That's the Connecticut state process. So it's not like you won and you're here. It's okay, you won or you got this license and you bring the, like the license with an address that shows side control, local approval, et cetera. Some companies are doing that already. Right? Some companies will do that after they were given the license. I think part of it depends on if they win in what is like the lottery. Because nobody knows that they're getting in the lottery.
Now, my point is this, we're not, in this case, this commission has to deal with a street address, a specific site.
Correct.
The state has outsourced that responsibility to us before they take action. Right? So we're the unpaid volunteers that have been inherited this job because the state changed the law. It, because we, adult.
I hadn't thought about it that way, but yeah, right. I mean, so they, so they get out a license. And then for them, so and they call the license provisional. And then to get the final license, a person, a company, entity, an address, right, would need to get that local approval to say, yeah, these guys can go here. And yes, they have left that.
We proved the, the earlier approval for the medical dispensary was based on the law at that time. And the only way that we could approve it according to our regs was to stay there with retail. Then the state changed the law and allowed for medical, uh, medical and adult use retail. And we, because we have to, have to categorize it as retail, we now have the possibility of adult use marijuana as a retail in the same location where we, and that's how we got here.
Right.
So we're faced with making a determination as to whether or not the previous approval can be expanded, changed into the solo adult use type use that would be regulated as retail. And it's not only a different use, but it's also an intensification and an expansion of the growth spurt area medical that was previously approved. That's how this commission views the difference. Right? So you're not applying, you're not using the previous approval for sale. You're using that in order to apply for retail adult use.
Correct. But I also believe, right, so we are, one of the, one of the reasons we were, we chose this location was because it was an available location for the zoning regulations that this commission put into place, that this is one where, where we could apply, right? So had we chosen something else that wasn't custom. Because we had chose one that wasn't one of these two, right? The application would not have even been possible. And so, you know, hey, we wanted to, um, we wanted to apply some, or we could apply, right? And wanted to buy some, or we could buy that, we felt had been the both, right? Because there could have been conceivably a moratorium along all Canada. So a lot of towns in fifty-nine at this point in Connecticut have put on a full moratorium or ban, but this commission, right, from our understanding, was, had put in a moratorium for everywhere but these locations. And as the definition of a special exception, right? We understood there's a public hearing. Sometimes don't have public hearings. West, West Hartford put in a full zone. You can just put it in. You know, we went to Manchester, we did a special exception there and there's some.
Yeah, well, well, bring it back to.
Yeah, bring it back to here.
The purview of this permission is, is written, is local, right here.
Correct.
Right? And so our concerns have to do with the special exception requirements of a regulation. And they particularly then refer to the site plan application process. The site plan is, application process is very much a checklist. You have to do all the, the things that are mentioned there. And there are other aspects of special exception uses that go beyond that. And that's why we're here. And one of the things that's in the special exception use is with regard to congestion in the streets and that bring, that then brings up the traffic study. The commission is not inclined to consider traffic as the only cause for a possible denial. That's, that wouldn't work. Traffic is traffic. It comes, it goes. And your traffic is not the same as somebody else's. So you're not, the commission would be on a bad footing if it had nothing but traffic to complain though. So we're looking at the regulations here to see if there's anything else that might be overwhelmed by all the discussion about traffic. Is there something else that we missed here? Well, what I saw in the parking report, report so far, that if the number of employee parking spaces onsite is less than the minimum number of employees expected to be working onsite, then there, then there's, there's insufficient parking for employees. Well, it doesn't specifically say that in our regs, but there is an obligation to designate employee parking spaces. And by designating, was it ten now? It's ten spaces. Then you're going to have fifteen to twenty-three. Then there's not enough parking for the employees. The problem is, is there's only twenty-seven parking spaces shown onsite. There'll be sixteen, yeah, seventeen for customers. And if they're coming in, that's a forty-five customers per hour, coming, you've got three, three trips every four minutes. So over the course of five minutes, you've got five times four, fifteen, you've got twenty minutes. You've got five times three visits over twenty minutes. That, that's fifteen visits in twenty, in twenty minutes. And if it takes five to ten minutes per person in the store, and the security people are obligated to kick people, oh, I'm sorry. To encourage people to leave the parking lot in less than ten minutes. There's going to be congestion in that parking.
So, so two, so two of the elements of that is one, so with staffing, especially with pre-orders, right, and appointments, we staff our majority of employees before we open. Want to see my whole face instead of these.
All right. So if you end up hearing that your, your operational aspects would pro, would preclude congestion.
Yeah. And that's what we try and, that's what we try and work on from a staffing perspective, right? When employees are there, because we're prepping orders all morning and that's part of the, that's part of our sort of scheduling plan. We also have, you know, included the, the stipends, right, which we've discussed to employees to bike, carpool, Uber, et cetera. Which we've seen as reduce our, our employees parking demand by about fifty percent because they, they drive together or other things. And so we try and keep those numbers, those numbers down. The other element of that that we've worked on, you know, quite specifically is, you know, we've already got a real estate person reaching out specifically in the neighborhood to try and find additional employee specific parking, if that would be possible, that we could make to help to minimize some of those things. Those are not finalized within the plan. And so we didn't feel specifically comfortable saying, hey, we've done this when they're not done yet. And so, right, it's sort of a, a flowing process. Especially because, hey, it's hard to commit X thousand dollars a month of, of parking rent before we know that we're going to, we have the opportunity to.
That just all, gets lumped in with your operational aspects that would have to be somehow enforceable.
Right.
In order for, for, for this, for. In order for, for, for this to, to not create additional problems. One of the, the traffic review also mentions that if the employees are encouraged to, to not park onsite, they have to get to site somehow. And if they're gonna get there, uh, by walking or by bicycle, there's no bicycle lane and there's no sidewalks in this area. So I looked in our regulations in section sixty-two, and I note that this particular location is in a section sixty-two, it's access circulation, parking and loading, and sixty-two point two point, uh, one, access to it from the site, uh, is via sidewalk. Sidewalks will be installed along state or local theater streets for commercial thoroughfares as identified in the plan of conservation and development for its supplements, preferably in areas south of I ninety-five, this is south of I ninety-five. And it says, um, uh, within one mile or wherever students tend to walk, maybe that's not it, but, uh, on the north or east side of a right of way, this is on the north side of a right of way for what is Route One at the front side of the property.
Yeah.
The, but Route One is bifurcated at that stop sign where Spring Brook Road brings Route One and I ninety-five traffic onto.
Sure.
Two-way Route One.
Yep.
And the other part of Route One heads out to ferry, to the river. And so item number three on the sixty-two point two point one, part A, is around the Connecticut scenic Route one fifty-four coastal loop road. And then we have route number four within the US Route One Boston Coast Road corridor, the ferry point loop. Alright, this is, this is that. And so under those regulations, it says that, uh, the commission, uh, the, the, uh, the, may require, it, it's up to us to choose to impose the requirement of installation of sidewalks where it says sidewalks will be installed in those locations. But you have not proposed any sidewalks or bike lanes so far.
No, I, I think, so number, Amy Sutens for the record, uh, number one, technically, because we're on the state road, DOT would have to approve the sidewalks, but our traffic engineer tells me that DOT would typically approve them. So if you would like sidewalks, we would gladly accept that as a condition of approval.
We have experiencing, we have experience, as this commission has experience, with requiring installation of sidewalk, sidewalks along Route One.
Right, which is, I think, why, the expectation is that it would be allowed, technically needs to be approved by DOT, but we would accept it.
And the other recommendations that we've seen from the traffic report and from, uh, the local vehicle traffic authority and chief Spiro is a realignment of the intersection of the Spring Brook Road portion of Route One to make it more perpendicular to the other part of Route One. And if, if so, then if, if this commission were to require the realignment of that intersection, then let's review the DOT to work out to, to meet a requirement of an approval. It's not, you, you don't get to, to assign that to Old Sabre. That's, if it's a condition of approval in order for you to exercise that approval, you get to work it out with state route, state Route One authorities.
It's in fact outside our property, so it would be an off-site improvement.
That's right.
So legally, you can't condition our.
Back to Plymouth, yeah, we can't.
We can't, you can't condition our approval on an off-site improvement. What we have noted in the statement of use I have done elsewhere in the state of Connecticut is, attorney Wilson, I spoke briefly about this, is that, um, we have drawn the design because of the process associated with the fact that it's an off-site improvement. If the town, we're happy to have that conversation, that the town of Old Sabre needs to be the applicant. We, if, if there is nothing in our traffic report and our study that indicates that this would be necessitated, that the improvement, the crash data, the rest of the information that, that Mr. Sullivan will, will discuss with you, um, says that this is not indicated. To the extent that we understand that there is a perception that this is an unsafe intersection, that not necessarily borne out by the actual data. Mr. Zaxton, and we included again in the statement of use, that if the town wanted to pursue that with the DOT, we would accept a condition that we pay for the improvement up to fifty thousand dollars, because that's our estimate of what the, um, cost of the improvement would be, uh, based on, on Mr. Sullivan's review. But as an offset improvement, it can't be conditioned under approval, but we understand that there is a desire on the part of the town to see that modified. Um, and we're, we're willing to, to contribute to that.
Sidewalk installation could be onsite and that could be entirely up to you. We also have experience with sidewalk installations through an encroachment permit that would be on state property right alongside your, the property in question here, this one. So somehow, so off-site improvements on the state right of way adjacent to the property are, are different from requiring off-site improvements that are farther away than immediately adjacent? It's a matter of degree. So we'll leave that, we'll leave that to our attorney to investigate based on our experience with Max's place installing multiple traffic lights on both Route One and Route one sixty-six on the other end of town.
And, and my question would be whether those are necessitated by the development. Here, this is, this is a voluntary offer, because we don't think that there's anything in, in the traffic reports, peer review, et cetera, that, that demonstrate that this improvement is necessitated by this development. So I would say that the difference is, importantly, number one, that the sidewalks are a condition requested and, and could theoretically be on our property. If you wanted them that far in, we could, we could fulfill that condition without DOT approval. Logistically.
You could.
You, you want them, you know, a, a more interior, excuse me, closer to the road. Um, and if you want that, as I said, that would require DOT approval. Here, we think that that would be, so we, we recognize that. But I think in both situations, we're, we're talking about work outside of our control and ultimately up to DOT. Um, just like in, in the situation you mentioned, you, the town of Old Sabre can install a traffic light on a state road unless DOT okayed it.
No, that, that, that town, that town of Old Sabre does not install traffic.
So, so it's, it's just all again in the, the spectrum of traffic improvements or site improvements where, where everything falls. And so I think those, but that's, that's the difference.
Our major thoroughfares are state roads, one fifty-four, Route One, one sixty-six. We, then we get to Route Nine and I ninety-five. And so earlier we did talk about town roads. Nothing happens on town roads that, that we're, that we're not aware of.
Correct.
It's always, it's almost always on a state road, so.
And, and, and I think that's true in, in many municipalities and frankly, why commissions of federal date are always left in this situation of, well, we don't know what DOT is going to say because so many things are on technically state roads. You might want to see an improvement and you get into the situation of DOT won't say yes until you say yes and you don't say yes.
We're, we're familiar with the multi-levels involved.
And that's, that's what we.
Same thing with your license.
Yeah.
Correct.
Alright, um, yeah. Uh, I, I had a separate question if I could ask, if that's okay?
Yeah.
It involves the, um, I think it's the Schedule A on your revised, um, statement of use that I had in front of me originally, hold on.
Yeah.
And this is revised August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two? Okay, so the exhibit A talks about an initial operation narrative. Is there a post initial operations narrative?
No, and that should really say operation. Well, this is the initial, the initial, the post initial, right, in our general operating is as we understand the man, and we actually talked about this in Cromwell last night, but as we understand the man, right, we know more about how much time each person takes. What percentage of our people.
So this is just the initial one.
This is how we expect.
Clear that, that is beginning.
And then ultimately, right, because we're of all, every business sort of evolves and your SOPs change based on the man and we understand that ours is much more.
So it would probably be good to have one that's like a post initial operations narrative.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I don't even know how to put a timeframe on the word initial, can, candidly, because initial could consistently continue for a long period of time. And we define it as initial because we know a state right.
I'm not even talking about timeframes.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about putting things in writing.
Yes, and we can, we can certainly do that. I think it's, it's Ben's trying to include the analogy, we, let's, let's assume as I outlined before, there are eighteen hybrid locations in twelve retail locations that are approved initially, and we have thirty. If the state goes on to license several more a year after that and a year after that, or they don't, on the other end of the spectrum, and it's just the thirty for a certain amount of time, that's the sort of unknown of when does initial no longer become initial? We're happy to put something writing, and that's the.
And just to note, if anything would change, right? Because candidly, from an operational perspective, I would love for people, a hundred percent of people to put in pre-orders all the time. It makes our life significantly easier for a long period of time.
Well, would you willing to be, to do that then?
So, so I will say, we have put in, uh, we've had approved, okay, conditions of appointment only. We've had periods of time of appointment only. We've had specific opening plans of conditions, so.
Sure, you're open to that.
Yeah, so we are open to, we're open, we're, our goal, right? And there's al, always a lot of questions. We don't want anyone about, like, we don't want to bother anyone, right? We want to be as simple as.
Oh, you answer the question.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're okay with that.
I'm sorry, Bob, I just.
Great. Alright, uh, you're, you're back, yes.
Thank you, um, and a lot of traffic discussion. I could do it a couple of ways, um, try to pick up on some of the specifics or, or maybe it's.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Sullivan, I'm with SLR Consulting and manage the traffic engineering transportation plan. Um, so by way of history, at the last hearing, we talked about a couple of facts and, and things like that. And, um, it was clear by the end of that meeting that the commission wanted more information. Um, also, um, had hired a peer reviewer. Um, subsequent to the meeting, I reached out to your peer reviewer after and asked what type, well, basically, as to this is the type of stuff we think would be useful as follow-up information. Um, they had a couple of thoughts and provided a, um, I forget, it was an email or a memorandum that basically crystallized what the follow-up study should include. Um, so we, we did that follow-up study and I can go through that. Um, we provided that information to your peer reviewer. Your peer reviewer, uh, yesterday came back with some comments on the information that we provided. And today we rushed and, uh, have some responses to the comments that we received yesterday. So, um, I can go through all of it and, um, and then your peer reviewer will mostly, um, be opining on his opinion, but I can cover, um, some of his comments as I go through my presentation. And that will give you the full picture of how we analyze this, is that, uh, uh, or I could just give you a summary of our report, let him talk about the peer review, and then I come back up and talk about the response.
We've seen electronic copies of all the data collected and, um, that, that the commission at this point is not traffic engineers. We're volunteers and don't have that expertise, which is why we, we ask for input from another traffic engineer to question and clarify a certain point.
Right.
So at this stage, those are the only issues that are important.
Okay.
And we don't need to go through all the tables, including the tables that were nothing but zeros. I don't know what value they added, but that's part of the traffic engineer's report. Then, uh, we, I looked at them, but, uh, it's, that's, all I need is what, what your report said and what the, the other consulting traffic engineer.
Okay.
Questioned, that's all I need.
Great, so I'll give you a high level of what our fo, follow-up study was. In essence, what we did was go collect more data. Um, the original, um, analysis letter that we did included some information that we, we gleaned from DOT counts that were done in the past. And it was asked that, well, why don't you get some summer data? So we went out there and got data on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, all day through all four days. It was sunny in the middle of vacation season, so we think we got normal peak conditions, normal, um, what happens every Friday, what happens every Sunday, uh, what happens every Saturday, for example. Um, there was not an accident on the four days on I ninety-five that we counted, but we feel like that's not, and the industry would not use that as a typical, um, analysis period if it was an accident that snowed traffic itself. Um, so we feel like we have good information, solid information, which, um, which allowed us to evaluate what the impacts would be during these peak summertime conditions. So we, we did that, we did the counts, we provided the results of the counts. Um, the next thing we did was look at the, uh, crash data, um, the accidents that were taking place there to see if there was anything that we thought our driveway or our operation would exacerbate, and we found that there wasn't. Um, um, so that information was provided to your peer reviewer as well. Uh, we then looked at the site itself. Uh, there's been some discussion, um, in our original evaluation, we relied on a couple of things, some, um, past uh, work we've done, some information, um, that ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineering provides, and just, um, you know, some information on what we think, um, this facility would generate. Um, our original estimate was, I think, thirty-five to forty, which was a little less than ITE would, would, would do. So for this particular study, what we asked, um, Fine Federal to do is if they can give us a profile of what would be a, a solid busy week by hour for every day of the week. If this is your profile and this is your marketing plan, what would be the successful profile? And they did that. And what we found, then we took the peaks during the lunchtime, um, that we found out from the counts, the peaks from the Friday afternoons, which we got from the counts, and the peaks on Saturday, which was just after, uh, I was at lunchtime just past noon. And then we applied those peak, uh, projections, which were forty-five, to those, um, peak hours. And we did our analysis. Um, the, um, final, um, finding of this report was when we add those trips to the new counts, the summertime counts, we don't impact the level of service. So the levels of service that would, uh, be at that driveway as a surveying and civil engineering firm are the same levels of service that would exist with this facility in place. Um, we then summarized that report by saying, and we understand, we're, we're at this hearing, we, we heard the, uh, chief's commentary, that there is, there has been some information provided to us that there are some concerns about that swoopy right turn lane coming out to Route One as you come off ninety pound Spring Brook. So we said, is there anything we could do there that might help that situation? So we looked at it and we came up with a situation where it's a very simple improvement. So when you're coming down to take that right turn, instead of having that nice free flow swoop, we said, let's get up like a more traditional intersection. Because what's happening now, there's a stop sign there, and people just don't stop. So when you bring them down to a more traditional intersection and all that means is closing off the swoop and doing a little bit of binding on those islands.
We, we understand a modification in that intersection would improve safety and not impede traffic flow so much. While at the same time, we just heard that the applicant has limits to what they, uh, are talking about being involved in the realignment of that. And so I think that's the situation we're in now, so it's, it's all.
Sure, okay. So then, uh, so this information was all provided to Cardisty and Annover, and they provided other comments yesterday. And today I have copies of this, you don't have this yet. But I went through their comments and gave our response to those comments. Uh, so I could paraphrase, um, there's about half of them required a response on our part. Um, the other half were basically them agreeing with what we did. Um, uh, the first, uh, comment had to do with the, uh, uh, the counts. What, what was the conditions of the count? Was there any accidents out there? I just described to you, there was no accidents, but we consider it a solid summer seasonal, um, count that we did. I just described to you, there was no accidents, but we consider it a solid summer seasonal, um, count that we did. Uh, and they also asked, said, you know, it might be useful if you provided us, uh, graphics of what the hourly volumes look like. We provided all the data on the original thing, on the original, but then we gave them these, we'll give them these graphs as part of this response, which let them visually see what the peak and characteristics are over the four days. Um, the second one had to do, uh, with our noble traffic volumes. They essentially say we're conservative in our analysis, so we agree, no response needed. Uh, number three was really a two-part question. One, the first part had to do with our Saturday analysis. When we estimated forty-five, forty-five was higher than ITE would tell us um, during the weekday analysis periods, but on Saturday, ITE gives a higher number than forty-five. And they said, why don't you analyze that? Um, so we did analyze that, um, and that, that was a hundred and twenty-nine total trips, which is about sixty transactions. So we analyzed forty-five, we re-analyzed that to sixty, and we essentially got the same results that we have that, um, those worksheets in here that we will provide to your peer review. Uh, the second part was to describe, um, more specific, not more specifically, but give, give them a better idea of, of what this appointment thing is really all about. How does that work? So, I won't go through it again, because I, I think Ben has described it for the commission quite well, but the second part of our response in three is really giving your peer reviewer an understanding of how we could, um, how Fine Federal could really monitor the flow of traffic and make it so that the, not only the, uh, traffic is, um, moderated to the projections or less, but also the parking becomes moderated, um, by that same procedure. So, the moderation describes how the, um, uh, the, the process would work to throttle this at forty-five transactions, or actually forty-eight transactions is the model I described here, which is, uh, ten-minute increments for appointments with eight stations open and staggering, um, in the best case, staggering each of the eight stations ten-minute periods. And that gives you the most, um, steady state flow of traffic. And under worst-case scenario, you have eight people doing their transactions and eight people getting there ten minutes early waiting for their transactions, we could still make the parking there under that particular model. So we go through the, um, uh, mechanics of how that would work. Four and five, uh, four, um, is agreeing with another portion of our study, which we agreed that that, uh, five and six had some suggestions about our analysis methodologies we've been talked about on response to comment two, so those were all included in response two. And, um, uh, seven, uh, they asked us, um, I, I apologize, because I thought we had put this in our original report, but the sightlines, to evaluate those, um, we did evaluate the sightlines. So with the, um, uh, traffic counter equipment we had, we can get the speeds on Route One as well. We found out that if they're under thirty-nine miles an hour in the southbound direction, that's the eighty-five percentile speed, which is what you use for establishing safe, site, site distances. In the northbound direction, it was forty-six mile per hour. So if you're coming from, uh, from town um, towards the, the ramps, then you're going forty-six miles an hour, or eighty-five percent of the traffic is doing that speed or slower. Uh, based on conduct guidelines, looking right, you should see five hundred and ten feet, uh, which you can do. And looking left, you can be able to see four hundred and forty-five feet, uh, unrestricted, which you can do. And, uh, then their last comment, uh, which, uh, we responded to was, um, a detailed parking analysis, and there's really two components to this. One is the patrons, and I discussed that quickly already, with the throttling of the, um, appointments. You can really monitor how many people are, how many, uh, patrons are actually on-site at any one time. Uh, conservatively, that would be a maximum of sixteen. We think more really quickly, it will be ten sixteens on there. Um, the employees, we went through a little discussion about, um, maximum employment. How many get there before, um, uh, the operation really starts, the retail operation, and what the number is as it goes through. Um, the fact that they have these incentive programs, and we said, well, let's not take fifty percent, but let's take maybe two-thirds, where you get one-third of them. Um, because it's not a, a, a real pedestrian-friendly, um, but it's still easy to carpool, to get, uh, dropped off. There's a lot of things you could do, um, other than walk or take a bike, that will eliminate your car parking, um, trip. So we took two-thirds of the employees on-site, we added together, and what we estimate is that the demands during peak parking time will be somewhere between nineteen to twenty-six cars, depending on how conservative you want to be in your, your estimates. Um, and we also point out that, you know, there's, this is all a process, which is, is interesting, where a lot of times, you know, we're doing these studies, all we have to go by is, is what the raw demand is for this traffic. Uh, we very rarely do we have an opportunity to work with an operator who has the ability to throttle it to match the site characteristics. And, um, in this particular case, they have that ability. Now, uh, when we talked in our original letter about the fifty-five, our original estimate was thirty-five to forty, and we talked about fifty-five being the, um, unbridled um, new opening demands that we might see. And we, um, even in that letter, we say, if that's the case, you have to find other ways to do it. If you're throttling back right from the start, you won't have that additional new burnage peak. Might have some curiosity peak, things like that, where people don't know yet about these points. Handle that, you know, they will have labs available to, to help them, uh, handle those, those conditions. So, um, to kind of put a bow on it all, uh, there's not enough traffic here where it's really going to change what's happening out there today. Um, you're still going to have to deal with your summer traffic, you're still going to have to deal with, um, an accident on I ninety-five. That's going to make, uh, uh, this road a real track to cut through. Um, but whether this is here or not, it's not going to change what's happening around here or what the traffic operations are in the general area. And you do have the ability, um, to make sure the site works, because you have the ability to evaluate, you know, the, the, um, program I lay out here, you get to evaluate that in real time, and they have the ability to, uh, adjust that if, if the need arises. So, um, from a traffic standpoint, I don't think there's much to worry about there, here, because of the, uh, um, the built-in throttling that's available and the alternatives, uh, uh, to, um, adjust on the fly for initial, um, burning weekly to the honeymoon periods.
Yes, your question?
Yeah, what, what's the level of service now?
Um, Bs and Cs.
Uh, and, and so the, the level post-construction, you say is going to stay the same?
I take that back. On a Friday afternoon, it's D, in most summer conditions.
Okay, summer afternoons on a Friday, it's D?
D, and it remains D, um, uh, under all of the scenarios existing. Background, which is future without this, and combined, which is future.
So that's summertime Friday afternoons only?
Uh, we looked at midday, which was the next highest peak, and those are Cs. And we looked at, um, a Saturday midday, and those are Cs.
Okay, that's a difference between C and D.
Um, well, it's, it's all based on what they call control delay. And I wish I had my cheat sheet here, but for instance, level of service A might be zero to five seconds. Level of service B, I believe, is five to fifteen. I think C is fifteen to twenty-five seconds. That's how long it takes you when you pull up to an intersection before you can go. And so at the stop sign, you'll pull up, if you're coming in Spring Brook, and you stop where you're supposed to stop. Takes you fifteen seconds if it's level of service C, somewhere in that area. Um, level of service D is the next level. Um, going off the top of my head, it might be twenty-five to thirty-five seconds. Uh, but it gets, it goes up and up and up.
Any other questions? No, the hearing, thank you.
Um, would you like me to touch these out now?
What do you think?
These are the, uh, response.
Your response, yeah, I'd really, we'd like to have.
I have ten copies.
All right, so anything, anything additional on the applicant before we open the floor to comment from the public?
Um, two, two minor things, um, now that Dave's explained about the parking. Um, in our site plan approval for that, that, in the site plan approval from two thousand and eighteen, um, as compared to existing conditions, there are parking spaces in the front yard setback that are legally non-conforming. Um, we think that if the commission still felt strongly about the parking condition um, and making sure there was more than adequate space, although the site plan approval anticipates that those non-conforming spaces would be removed, we would certainly be fine if you wanted us to delay implementing that portion of the site plan approval. Maybe a year or something consistent with the discussions we've had, so you could understand um, what the operations were if those spaces were necessary. Again, they're legally non-conforming, so they're, they're allowed to remain. Obviously, the goal is to.
No, not the one that goes across the property line into the right away from Route One.
Uh, right, that, not that one. Um, but yes, but, so those, those spaces are there. Um, if the commission still was, still thought having more parking than, than we think might be necessary, having heard from, from Mr. Sullivan, I'd be happy to draft a condition or something to the, to the effect of we would come back, you know, we would leave those spaces and delay implementation of that portion of the site plan.
Well, no, our section ten regarding, um, non-conformity, non-conformities and the lessening thereof. With this being a change of use in the special exception application involved, it's, uh, much more important to achieve reduction in non-conformity.
Under, and again, we, we submitted based on the approved site plan, but I just wanted to note, because it does have additional parking and, and ultimately would be, um, your, your question. Um, and then the only other thing, because I forgot to hand it out before, um, we just wanted to provide in, in response to some of the comments that have been received. Um, there is, this is a, an article, but it cites back to another study that talks about, um, despite what the representations have been, that crime rate actually drops in the areas immediately surrounding, um, dispensaries, cites back to a, an actual published study. This is, this is a summary of it, um, but it is there, it was for your, for your reference. I think there's been, you know, some indications by members of the public that they're concerned about, you know, increased crime in the area, but there is, there is data to say otherwise. So, unless there are other questions, we'll, I'll turn it back over to, um, the, um, peer reviewer.
What?
Your peer reviewer.
Any questions, anyone here? Oh, okay, so, at this point, this is a public hearing, and we typically open the floor to comments from the public, is present in the room and online. You'll have to raise your hand, hit the raise your hand button, and we do it. One, hold on, just a second. Oh, yeah. So, we will, uh, take comments, uh, in favor of the application, alternating with those opposed to the application. Yes, good.
Mr. Chairman, our traffic engineer is online to respond as well, just so that you're.
Oh, our traffic engineer is online, thank you. It's, uh, is online to respond to what was just there. So, we'll, we'll hold off on that. Here you are, Greg Del Rio?
Uh, yes, for the record, Greg Del Rio, Principal Traffic Engineer for Hardesty and Hanover, um, in Norwalk, Connecticut. Um, so yes, uh, we took a look at the previous report that was provided and, and provided, um, our responses and comments, to which David just, um, summarized his responses. We, we will obviously take a look at the written and the data provided, and then, you know, um, provide a, a follow-up letter based on what was, um, what was, uh, what was provided. Um, so, just very quickly, you know, um, he hit all the spots in, 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 at a high level. Um, I'll just start off with that. We looked at existing summer volumes, future background volumes, um, project-generated trip estimates, trip distribution, future volumes with the project capacity analysis, the site distance analysis that he mentioned, and, and parking analysis. Um, so I'll just run down our comments very quickly and, you know, and just my, um, initial assessment from, from Dave's responses. The I ninety-five conditions during counts, um, what he described looks like it'll be acceptable, so, um, you know, thanks for addressing it. We were just looking for what the description was during the, during the condition of the counts. Um, the conservative growth rates were, were accepted prior. Um, the, the first real sort of issue is the issue with the trip generation on Saturday. Uh, we did agree with the chip generation provided during the weekdays and Friday. Um, it looks like it'll be acceptable. They did adjust up to the hundred and twenty-nine trips as per the ITE trip generation rates for Saturday afternoon. Um, they provided the site distance analysis, so we'll take a look at that, but that should be acceptable. Um, proposed intersection improvements would improve safety. We agreed with that. And we agreed with the assessment that most likely, um, I don't know if he mentioned it, but there are a lot of rear-end type accidents. That was the only sort of trend that we saw in the crash analysis. And, and I agree with David, it's, it's, you know, and, and from our own observations, um, not all the vehicles stop today. They kind of glide through the stop sign. And then all of a sudden, you get someone who does make the stop, and that's probably what's causing the rear ends. There's, they're so used to gliding through that stop, that when the occasional person does actually behave and do what they're supposed to do, they get rear-ended. Um, but of course, we'd have to work through that with, uh, Connecticut DOT approval. Um, the parking analysis is the one that we'll have to take a look at what was provided. Um, you know, there's just concern that twenty-seven spaces per zoning plus one, I think they have twenty-eight altogether. Um, there was fifteen to twenty-three employees during hours of operation. So even if you take two-thirds of that, you still end up with ten to fifteen potential vehicles on-site and parking spaces being occupied. If you add that to the sixteen that they're sort of estimating as far as customers, you get a little more than the twenty-seven, twenty-eight spaces provided. So, we'll, we'll take a look at that. I don't want to jump ahead. Let's, let's take a look at, at what the actual analysis looks like and how they got to their numbers, and, and then we'll formally, you know, respond to that one. Uh, and we'll formally respond to all of them, but that one is a little bit, um, you know, just hearing it is not enough for us to really make an assessment at this point. Um, we did request more information on the operations, the kind of understanding how the turnover, how it affects parking analysis, traffic, you know, how the appointments will be made, what the length of stay, all those assumptions. Um, so it looks like they've done their homework and provided that information for us to take a look at. So, uh, again, briefly in conclusion, there was the description of the I ninety-five conditions. There was the intersection site distance analysis. There was the update to the Saturday trip generation rates. And then probably the biggest one is the parking analysis with the description of operations. So, that's a, a quick summary.
Thank you. Now, with regard to any further, uh, input, I would ask, please, that the, uh, the presenter give the zoning commission something that has to do with zoning, and zoning has to do with land use. We've heard a lot about traffic, so unless you have something new to say about traffic above and beyond the statistics we've analyzed, collected and analyzed by the traffic engineers and what they have said about one another's conclusions, we don't need to hear more about traffic unless you've got something that applies to zoning with regard to traffic. We understand it's a concern, we get that. But we have analyzed it, and we have input, and we live, the, we who live here. But we have analyzed it and we have input and we live, the, we who live here know what, what it is. And that we understand the conclusion from the traffic engineer, the level of service doesn't change. And those of us who've been doing this for a while understand what the level of service. Doesn't change means, means to the town. We get that. So if, if you have comments regarding land use and aspects of the application that have to do with, uh. Size height location and, and other aspects of what we regulate, we'd appreciate that. Alright, so is there anyone further to wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? That's in, in the back.
Thanks, uh, Matt Sweeney, I'm, uh, from Old Sabre.
Can you spell your name, sir?
I'm sorry?
Can you spell your last name?
Sweeney, S W E E N E Y. Um. I, I'd like to speak in opposition to the, to the petition. Cannabis remains a Schedule One, uh, controlled substance at federal level. Essentially, what the, what the. The commissioners are asking you to do is allow. What by federal statute is a criminal enterprise by se- by special, uh, exception. I'd be really interested to know. What our culpability, that it's because we're complicit in this activity. What are, what are limits liability would be by allowing this type of enterprise within our, uh, town?
But you brought up an interesting point, but it has, it's, it's, it's not our level of, it's beyond our taste. It's not our level of expertise with regards to the illegality, the illegality, the morality, or any other social aspect. And I understand the feds have not yet approved. Cannabis for, for production, sale, consumption, but that's not zoning, okay?
Yeah, but by, but by allowing that special exception for this enterprise to, to exist. We're, we're taking on some liability, we're taking on some risk, and I don't know what the limits of that risk are.
Well, the state, the state has intervened, let's say, in the process once again, and, and the state has made decisions. That have dumped it on us.
So, uh, I understand supremacy lies with the federal government. Article six, paragraph two clearly states federal law has precedence over any state rules. I, I, I really don't want the town to be in a position where we've got liability based on bringing a special exception.
Right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application who is attending virtually via Zoom? In favor? Oh, okay, just believe it.
I don't normally go to zoning meetings, my second one, and I don't normally.
Sir, can I have your name, please?
Your name, your name, for the record. Stoner Senior.
Can you spell your last name?
S T O N E R.
Okay, sorry.
Pardon me?
Okay.
Okay. Um, I moved here thirty-eight years ago. Bought a house in Briar Cliff, right around the corner from where you're talking about. Twenty-eight years ago, I opened a bowling company across the street from where you're talking about. I go through that intersection eight times a day. I don't care what your zoning says or what your. Engineers say, that is dangerous. You can, when you come down and you're coming from. Pretty near the street now, onto one, you have to turn around and peek to see who's at the stop sign. When you come in the other way to go to Springbrook, the people at the stop sign are looking towards people coming off the turnpike. They're not looking straight ahead. You turn to the door and they pull on pretty. It happens all the time. So may not, I don't know how many asses there were, but in thirty-eight years, there's a lot of close looks, including with me. Um. That's all I can say about that part. Well, in summertime, traffic is terrible. When ninety-five stops. The exit between sixty-eight and sixty-seven are the bypass. You don't move there bad. It's generally just come to a stop. And so, and that's a traffic problem. I don't understand why any town really wants to take this on. Sure, the vast majority of people that smoke marijuana, okay, are all mighty citizens. But there's that small portion that you want to bring into your town. I don't know why, but that's just what I think. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Now with two opposed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application?
Yes, please.
I am opposed, so if you'd rather go with someone who was actually approved, definitely want to go with them first. If you'd like to hear from me, I, I'm, I'm registered.
Anyone? No, none appearing? You've got a, a raised hand there, John Coop Public, yes. Please identify yourself for the records.
Hi, my name is Mark Hand. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just want to speak in favor of, but I, I don't know. Despite a lot of fear mongering, um, I don't really see how you can differentiate this perfectly legal business from any other business.
You think, could you just tell me if you are a resident or not?
Yes, I live in Old Sabre.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, I just don't see how you can differentiate, uh, between one business and another. Thank you, that's all.
Hi, my name is Tom Briggs, B R I G G S. I live on Briar Cliff Trail, which is directly behind where the dispensary or the proposed dispensary will be. Favors. And yes, sir, and, uh, so, uh, my concern is this. I came to the meeting not knowing a lot of the background about what the committee has already done. But it sounds like between twenty eighteen and nineteen, you approved a medical dispensary location in two different possible, uh, places in the town. And now, uh, the group has applied for a permit and it has of May has declared that they will be a commercial use, uh, dispenser. And so now, uh, there's been a lot of apparently detailed work done on whether or not this is a possibility for our kind. But my question is, did the committee say, yes, we'll go ahead and approve on, you know, on, on, based on all the contingencies. That you would be allowed to have a commercial use dispensary in the town. And if not, then why have we gone into so much minutia and detail to determine whether or not that's possible before we've even decided whether or not we wanted that? That's my first question.
The, the regulations allow this application, so they filed it, so that's why we're here.
But why have we gone into all this work in detail when we haven't decided whether or not we're going to be doing that yet?
Well. At one point, the zoning commission adopted regulations concerning this. So the discussion about those regulations that ha- have been already adopted.
Okay.
I don't think we should be spending our time, effort and money or theirs on something that we haven't considered as to whether or not we want to do yet. That's a, that's a big waste of everybody's time and resources. Number two.
I, I guess I'm not articulating this.
It has been said, I don't, I don't mean to be flip, but it's water under the bridge. About the regulations and the state statutes that got changed and how we got here, so.
Point, you mentioned during the meeting that it started out as a medical use offering and not a commercial use offering. When did that change to the point where we thought we should invest a lot of time, effort and resources into getting into minutia? Without even really having a meeting to talk about whether or not the town.
We had a moratorium to take our time in figuring things out. We got near the end of the time and, and the, this commission. Seeking public influence, we got nothing like this at that time.
It was advertised, it was in the newspaper.
And the planning commission supported the, the, the change and, and, and we got input from other agencies and. Other than Chief Spira and Youth and Family Services being vocal about opposition. For the regulation change. With the regulation change was less than it, let's say, was less than it could have been. But only the two locations that we had in the past were eligible. We did not open it up to commercial operations across the business districts in town. Not even one, not even the one that this is in, this is the only one site. And so that was a, it was a compromise where, and a compromise nobody gets, neither side gets what they really want. But that was a compromise that resulted in the regulation that allows for the previously approved medical only. To apply for the commercial retail. For adult use, recreation. And so that's how they got here to apply for this.
I think these things have a tendency to get momentum without necessarily buy-in. And that's what I think has happened here, to be honest with you. The second thing is, this is not a liquor story. Liquor has been legal since prohibition in nineteen thirty, so for over ninety years, and prior to the, prior to prohibition was always legal. And so it doesn't have that criminal element that drugs do. And now so recently, we've said, okay, let's legalize marijuana. Let's do that, let's go, right, that's great. But it's just coming out of an illegal enterprise. Environment, and that illegal enterprise is going to find Old Sabre, which they didn't even know about before and say, hey, this is a great place. Look at the nice properties, people, obviously an affluent community, why don't they come in here and, uh, and do something they shouldn't be doing? And I live here, I live there, I've spent all my life paying for my property. I don't want my equity to be valued, I don't want my children in danger, I don't want my grandchildren in danger. So this is a real concern for me.
Yes, thank you.
Policy issues and then there's the nuts and bolts of the regulation. And we're, we're subject to the policies of what's been done and the state. And to some, maybe the Fed, but we don't know, but we're not in charge of those issues anymore at this point. We're dealing with the nuts and bolts of this application, just this one. So we, we can't address the, all the aspects that, that you bring up. It's not, it's not, not our charge, but it can make a good choice for our community.
We can do that.
Uh, in the back, yes, in the doorway.
My name is Christopher Sestaro, C E S T A R O.
Could you, could you, could you please spell that for our court?
C E S T A R O. I lived in town over forty years. I know some of your Chris and some others. I own Ocean Performance across the street. You all are over here. Um, I'm not here to talk about what's right or what's wrong. I'm not going to let the guy, you know, do your own thing. But my main concern, and I might have missed it because I'm on EMS tonight, I had to run to a call, I've been a firefighter for twenty years in town. Um, I have a great parking lot, I have great lawn, I have great everything out front and I might have missed it because I had a step car. Specifically, how are we going to keep the overflow cars out of my lot? And off my front lawn. We run a lot of heavy equipment, boat trailers, uh, ninety-foot trucking trailer in and out. We've got a lot of truck traffic, uh, and boat customers bringing in large boats. Difficult enough to work on this traffic that we have right now. Um, so concerned about the traffic, I mean, you don't want to talk about, specifically for zoning. What do I need to do to protect my property from the overflow? I know I heard something about Laz beforehand, so I might have missed it, so maybe catch me up there at the gas station.
Covered, all right? Have we, have we covered that?
About the Laz parking? The Laz parking?
Oh, the la- the Laz parking.
That's what he's asking.
Yeah.
He's mentioning that.
I just, I heard something, I heard.
The applicant sold us that the last, so last parking is the national, they would be, uh, available to the applicant if approved. And they were operating, that the last parking would be assisting in with regard to the on, onsite parking lot. And, and vehicles moving around there. Chief Spira, as our local traffic, as legal traffic authority here in town. Says that they're not to get involved, that a private company like Laz Parking wouldn't be involved in. Holding up traffic and having people come in and go in and out of the turnpike, to, to the site. And so the, the applicant, through, through, through another channel. And as a, as a part of the state law. Is, was, is it still in the state law that the applicant would pay for police services to do the tra- the heavy traffic?
Yes.
As the provision stat.
So the state law has, has, has thought of what your concern is.
Right.
And there's a, a, a mechanism to address that for. Li- a limit, it's limited either time or dollars or vote, but that's not zoning.
So I, so I live with this property across the street. I've been there, I've been in business. Thirty-nine years and I've moved there twenty-five years ago. And I've looked at Angus's place for years and say, oh, it's a nice little place, it's small, it's cool, you know. But there's really not a lot of parking, twenty-seven parking places are going to have employees. Whether it's appointment or not, I cannot see that place not having cars any turnaround down on Route One, or Springbrook, I'm sorry. Parking on my lawn, and then what do I do? I call Eric for towing and I have a confrontation. I, I really don't need any more confrontation at my age. So I don't want to be out there yelling at people, go park on my lawn, get out of my parking lot, I'm going to tow you, tow car, and the guy beat me up. I don't need it. So. I'm not against it, I'm just against where it is. Because when I look at that little piece of property.
Yeah.
You only have, you're best in zoning guys, only so much coverage, your pavement count is coverage, there's only so many parking places you could put in. So I don't see how that volume is going to even be close to one. That's, I guess, my point.
Anyone else online or present in the room wishing to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, well, I, I called on this lady first, we'll, we'll, we'll get to you online next.
Uh, calling away fifty-five St. Hill Street.
Can you spell your last name?
Please, please spell your last name.
It's hard to hear over here.
I'm personally, I'm for this thing, uh. This is not a fly-by-night operation, obviously, and cannabis have been legalized in. Connecticut, they're used to it, people. Uh, if you're going to have somebody that's going to just come in and, and, you know, put up some building. These people are really doing their homework. And if we're going to have to have a cannabis facility in the town. It might as well be by somebody that knows what they're doing. And as far as, uh, the. As far as the daycare across the street, I don't think three-year-olds are going to be running across to a dispensary. I mean, that's just ridiculous.
Online?
Yeah, Ed.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Edward Armstrong, I'm a resident of the town. I'm, I'd like to, uh, speak about my opposition to, uh, the cannabis at two thirty-three Boston Post Road. I'll, I'll just make two succinct points. So first is. From what I've read, we've already, the town has already approved recreational retail marijuana. Earlier in twenty twenty-one, so around November or October of twenty twenty-one, we approved five custom drive. That's on the west end side of town. This location's on the east side of town. So I don't believe we should be considering a second recreational retail marijuana in town at this time. My second point is that on the. East side of town, where two thirty-three Boston Post Road is, that's right in the middle of what we consider. Mariners Way District Master Plan. So, you know, I wish I had come to your first hearing back when you were considering the regulations. I didn't, but. Mariners Way, we put a, the town put a lot of time and effort into making that plan for our future. And Mariners Way, it's a, it's a town vision, vision to make the art area, that, that area more appealing to work, live, play. And shop. So, yeah, it's a big plan, but that area, you know, we're hoping that's going, that's going, there's going to be investment someday. It's going to be a kind of place where I could probably bring my grandchildren. So I think, I believe that recreational marijuana in the middle of Mariners Way would diminish that plan. Not, and, and finally, in contrast, the first recreational marijuana facility that was approved in Old Sabre. Is on the opposite side of town, far away from Mariners Way, far away from any schools or daycares. And it's, it's, it's in the dead end road. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, yes. Um, I, I have a question and some comments. My name is Bob Ginder, G H I N D E R. I am not an Old Sabre resident, I live in New River. Um, so my first question for you is, um, do you guys?
Well, please, please ask the question through the commission.
Okay. Do they own the property that they're applying for, or are they leasing the property?
It's, that doesn't matter, to, to this application.
Okay.
They, they own, the, the owner has given. They they own, the owner has given permission for the operation to apply and or something else, but they're entitled to make this application.
Okay, thank you. Um, so my first comment that I wanted to make, and I don't know the law entirely. But I know that I read all the letters that people had submitted online and everything, and I know a bunch of people were talking about the three percent that you get from the sales of of the cannabis. Um, I just wanted to clarify, and and I, like I said, I'm not an attorney. I don't know the law exactly. But that three percent doesn't really go to the town budget. It goes to very specific things. Uh, one of which is like rehab programs and things like that. So so for those who say it's going to benefit the town because it's going to the town budget. It really doesn't. You have to really look to see where that three percent goes. It goes to something very specific. That was one of the reasons we turned it down in Deep River, uh, the retail sales. Um, the reason I was asking about uh who owns the property, uh, the reason why is because right now that property is owned by Angus McDonald. Uh, he owns several businesses. One of those businesses is right next door to me. Um, and we just spent three years in court um because of nuisance violations.
It doesn't apply to this application.
I'm just, I'm just saying, what type of person owns that property? I would like to speak, please. Um, and so uh they have ignored all of our requests to go to the zoning enforcement officer and everything. So I would just be wary when you do approve this this application. If you do, you're very, very specific as to what is allowed, what's not allowed, what's the responsibility of the applicants, what's the responsibility of the property owner. Um, just because I've spent tens of thousands of dollars fighting this same property owner. Look on the front page of the Valley Courier. You can read all about it. You can look at the um the suit um online. It's Stewart versus Police Factory. Um, but my opposition is really about the property itself, not the business. I think you guys did a great presentation and I would probably be in support of it if it worked for where the property is located. So just be very careful, especially you who live right now.
Anyone else here tonight and uh we've we've we're two hours in and uh Chris, we have, do we have any other?
All right, yeah. I'll make it, I'll make it quick. Um.
Name, please.
Lisa Gableman, G A B E L M A N N.
Are you a resident?
Yes. Um, a couple of things I want to say just because um as they were mentioned. Um. As they were mentioned, it was almost like they were foregone conclusions. Um, which you spoke about momentum and a very concerning listing. Town after town after town with applications and hybrid situations that don't have licenses yet. The other thing that went over without any hesitation was naming Newington, Cromwell, Middlesex, Grandford, which of those towns is even close to the side of the bars? So things shouldn't just be put out apples to apples. We are not Martha's major or Cromwell or Middleton or Newington or Grandford. So people should already understand that those places have are applying no license. So then specific questions I have are, and it was glad that you talked about SOPs before because that's my question protocols and SOPs regarding loitering, and I wish the chief was here today, loitering. What the stuff is when you have someone that arrives without an appointment? What you do when someone arrives less than twenty one years old? What do you do when someone uses in the parking lot even though they know they're not supposed to? What do you do when someone just won't leave? What do you do when someone is DUI, belligerent, or needs medical attention?
Well, I appreciate your concerns, but the the zoning commission doesn't do that, right?
That's that's fine.
They can respond to that. At the time, once everybody speaks. I think, you know, after, let's get everybody that wants to speak as a member of the public to speak.
Okay, yes, here.
Jacqueline Mitchell, M I T C H E L L. I live on Springbrook Road. I'm maybe a thousand feet from two thirty three Boston Post. I am totally opposed to the business going in that slot. Stick it on the other side of the town. I do not want to deal with the traffic. When ninety five gets backed up, like was mentioned. We cannot leave our driveway to get to Route One or to get to Route Nine. I I I honestly think this is a big mistake for Old Sabre to break the century. Let the people drive to Grand. Let them drive to Grand. They want it, we don't. Thank you.
Yeah, in the back, Kyle Davis, you and I just, another time I move on.
I saw a question on a comment you made actually that there was a lot of public attendance to the first hearing. So are you implying that if there wasn't one public attendance at that hearing, that this would have already been stopped or declined? And I guess if that is the case, then is this counsel for it?
I think he was just making an observation. That's all that was.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, anyone else in the room? Yeah, one more time.
All right, I'm William Stoner Junior. This is my father, and we're actually on opposite sides of this. And I can tell you, I can take all of you right now downtown and buy you all an ounce of pot. So would you like to make money on taxes? Would you like to like have it like done like on the back streets behind Stop and Shop or behind Walmart? That's not the way it does. Personally, I don't smoke pot. I just want you to know that I totally agree with my father. The traffic situation, when you come off, because I live with him half the time. You come off the road, you have, I, we live at three or four Boston Coast Road, which is right around the corner from where you're talking about. It's totally congested, even at seven o'clock in the morning when I go to work. But the whole thing about the marijuana thing, that has nothing to do with it. People were smoking pot every day, right now, like right outside your building. I guarantee you. Kids that are like thirteen, fourteen, whatever, years old are smoking pot right now. That's not the problem. The problem is where the building is going to be. Because it's right off the highway, Route One and everything goes right there. That's the problem. I don't have a problem with people smoking pot. And like I said, I don't smoke pot, thank God, but there is a problem with everyone saying that where it's going to go is because there's a pot problem. It's a traffic problem. It totally is a traffic problem. Because everyone's going to stop there and you can't get off the highway. Ninety five is crazy up in there, and that is the biggest problem. If they were to move somewhere else where there's not going to be a traffic problem, that would be the easiest thing. I have no problem with people smoking pot. Like I said, I could take you probably around the building and you find like two kids smoking right now. But that's not the problem. The problem is where people come off the highway and they stop there. Is it's congestion in the summer, the fall, the spring, the summer, it's always a congestion right there. That's the problem. I'm sorry.
Understood. We've heard from the traffic engineers and their numbers, which didn't get any backup on ninety five in that set. And we've heard from local residents who've experienced what they consider to be unacceptable backups in traffic.
Right.
We on the commission, we have to live in a town to be on the commission. We also have local knowledge that we can bring to our judgment here.
Right.
All right, so let's say that we've covered that for traffic. So let's move on to other aspects of the application.
Because I know it's not your purview to like talk about marijuana, I'm just telling you, that would be a total traffic issue.
I get your point. All right. The the applicant, uh, is anyone else wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to non-affirming? And the applicant, would you like to respond to the comments that you've just heard?
I I see two names there. I'm not, I
No hands are up, no hands.
So yes, um, while technically outside of your jurisdiction, find that all is the contract purchaser of the property. That's noted in our our materials, but I think there was some representation of that. Um, obviously during our first presentation a couple of weeks ago, we went through a lot of the um, questions about operations that are reflected in our um uh, statement of use, state law, et cetera. But I'll let Ben address those because I think there are some members of the public in addressing those comments um about loitering.
I think, yeah, there were specific questions. If you could address the specific questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, and Zach Seepo, I'm federal. Uh, I might need to go back as I remember each of them. So around yours, because the parking is right across the street, so we don't allow loiter, we don't allow loitering. We don't allow, there's no consumption on site. People can't stay and wait. Um, people have to use our parking. People are supposed to and have to use their parking lot and other facilities and locations. We have put up signage and paid for the signage in other people's parking lots to say we never had to say no find that a parking because generally they don't want that. We would say parking for X Y Z business. And so that's something that we generally do and work with. Before we open, we always be with every neighbor to have an opening plan to understand what that sort of looks like and how that operationally we we happens. Um, when we've worked with, so Laz Parking they're all from Connecticut, either and we, um, you know, Laz Parking, they're huge, but they're based in Hartford and we've got a great relationship with them. And so one of the things that they do is go do neighbor interviews around the planning around parking management. They do not uh, traffic as a verb. They do not traffic the traffic on other roads as um Chief Spira noted in his letter as well as accurate. That is specifically to manage and handle the way they best do parking um in certain facilities. They've done valet and other facilities. They've done specifics to where a register might be. They did do some of the openings in the map that shoots it to the center. That opened, my first map was a little bit of a different setup and program than Connecticut because theirs was sort of rolling through the process versus the other. So um, you know, Connecticut plans to generally open multiples at once versus like checking one at a time. I think some of those fears stem from that. So I hope that, again, it doesn't answer this, it doesn't, right? You can't predict the future, but that is generally how.
I guess at the beginning, we just sit in the bar talking about going forward and projects.
Sure.
I think the first thing I'd say, Ben, why are you trying to put ten pounds of poop in a five pound sack? What is the attraction to that place where an industrial parker, like I said, I have no breadth of anything you're doing, except that in my brains as a businessman, when I look at that thing, I go, that's not gonna work. That would be my first, if I was you, and the first thing would be, this is not gonna work according to.
Sure.
So as I look at it, I go, they not get it. It really doesn't have a parking. It doesn't have a traffic flow that's going to be good for your customers. They don't want to get anything pulled out. It's just, it doesn't really fit. And I just wonder what the attraction is there.
Sure, so I don't a hundred percent, I don't a hundred percent agree, right? We've got sight with fewer than twenty seven, twenty eight parking spots uh in other locations that are both medical and adult use in the same facility. I understand the analogous comparison between Martha's Vineyard and yours. Not different there. We do have fewer than twenty twenty spots. Fewer than that in Rowley as well. So so those are those elements. And then, you know, we're trying to operate and open a business, right? Instead of we look around. We look around, we feel that this area is an area of, right? So one, there are very specific zoning rules that allowed us to apply in this location. There are a number of towns across the state that have allowed and not allowed. There's also distant requirements that we have based on our facilities and doing there twenty miles away from each other. And per the zoning regulation. Sorry, oh, sorry, per the zoning regulation, right? That location we felt was good in general, right? We've had other feedback in places saying, we don't want you like down on Main Street next to Liv where Liv's would be because they don't want traffic going further through the town. They actually want an easier on, easier off for people who are um so those are different elements of sort of why we can't agree like this location.
Ben, Ben? This woman asked specific questions. About loitering, about people who show up drunk.
The word allow cannot be in the answer. Because I don't allow you to do that. Now, what's your next step?
Well, so we have, so in our operations, um, so loitering, right? So in our operations, we very specifically have employees, we don't find the security that they're not hold the weapon. And they, we have uh greeters, right, who are outside checking IDs, as we talked about specifically in the operations last time. Checking IDs, manning the parking lot, ensuring that people are not sitting there. Public consumption is is not legal. So when somebody is, we have generally, we, so we've had that happen at other facilities. We couldn't call the police. People have been, we have not had any out here, and honestly, it's happened twice in three years, and we have not had any elements because our facilities are one hundred percent can ride. Three hundred sixty degrees outside, everywhere inside except for the bathrooms and employee break rooms. So those are the elements of those things that we do to manage, to very specifically manage, right? Telling people, you're sure they have to leave. If you need to call, we never had to do that, right? We made one call in front and then they tuned off, right? So that was literally two times ever.
So what your answer, your answer is that if they're loitering, you will call the police?
Correct. Yeah.
That's the answer.
And if they're less than, so if they're less than twenty one, they are absolutely one hundred percent not allowed in the facility. But they're not. We check ID now.
What do you do when they insist that?
They don't go in the facility. We check ID outside.
Okay, no, they won't move. They are down on the on the ground going, you're gonna have to physically take me out of there.
I I I understand your concerns, but that's not zoning.
I understand that.
Yeah, but we're, we're here at this meeting and spending a lot of time, so for more than two hours. And we've got to stick to zoning. Your concerns are understood and they're real, but it's not zoning. We can't base the decision on what you're bringing forth now.
And just to note, we we did go to both the planning board where we received and where we received a majority of the vote, as well as the economic development commission, all which had a public hearing and agendas that were public and written in those, right, which were sort of the theme of use within the town.
Yeah.
Right? We do not have, we didn't have that. And so we're here at zoning. I understand, right? There's, as things happen, there is, you know.
Unfortunately, I did not get information until a pamphlet came in the mail about you guys moving in. Now, this has been on the record in our town since two thousand eighteen. The last I heard, it wasn't gonna happen. Then I got this little flyer and here I am, because I I understand you being tired of the two hours. This could have been split between two meetings if if the public was more aware. And if I have to watch the agenda every week from now on, I will. I understand you're volunteered. I'm grateful you're here. But this would have been easier. And I understand what you're saying about Len. That's totally fine. But I also know if Chief Spira was here, he would, he would be bringing up these these issues.
Just one quick question. Will you give a backup, please? For the town.
With all due respect, Mr. Shannon. There is we're getting into the point of the public just directly asking a question. I was willing to let it go because we're trying to address some of those questions additionally. I my recollection, given the hybrid meeting, anybody could watch the tape of the prior meeting.
I can do.
Um, we addressed a lot of these questions in our initial presentation. So if you wanted to go back, um, I think that was certainly, certainly meaningful. I I also would like to remind um you, your your decision, just to bring it back from Len's, is not based upon if someone violates the law. We're assuming that things are operated um correctly. And so I think there's there's some concern on the part of the public. Again, I I think in the interest of time, we I will, we are going to continue this meeting tonight because we are waiting for traffic comments. If there are other public comments, we're happy to to address this, but a lot of them were discussed at Len during the first night of the public hearing, and I would encourage that.
Recording of that public hearing is available online. Yes, it is. It's fine.
Just a few things that I would like to put into the record. First of all, um, you can subscribe for emails for delivery of the agendas. They are on our website. They're posted in the Hartford Current on our doors, never mind flyers and other things. So please go ahead and on our doors, never mind flyers and other things, so please go ahead and subscribe and you'll get alerts every time there is a zoning planning, whichever meeting you're interested in attending. Um, we did receive a number of letters. And I would like to just add those to the record. There may be some duplicates because I entered our referral responses into the record at the last public hearing, so if there's a repeat um that may happen. Um, I did go through, and I've been doing this recently, is putting the names of the people who submitted letters, residents and non-residents, because with social media, we've been receiving for other hearings, um, comments for people who do not live in the United States or the state of Connecticut, so I think it's a little relevant. Um, just to get a little perspective as to who is commenting. So the following residents have submitted letters against this application. These, all of these letters are on our website and they did distribute it to the commission. Robert Clark, Erica Cosenza, Sandra De La Ripa, William and Carol Dipley, two letters from J T Dunn, Susan Egland, Carl Engelbrink, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, Rebecca Wallach, Michelle Briggs, Ted Nowakowski, Thomas Briggs, Susan Carter, Susan Kish, Susan Let's Go, Paul Condorino, Gillian Lombardi, Scott and Patricia Hills, Jaclyn Mitchell, and I don't have the first name, but the last name is Di Capua. In support, um, non-resident Wayne Arut, residents Brianna Coats, Richard Rosenthal, Alex Timiskis, Rhonda Worth, Jill Ziplow, Cooper McGinnis, Sybil Nassau, non-resident, Thomas DeVivo, the mayor of Wyndham, Connecticut, uh, non-resident, um, residents Kia Henderson, Jonathan Adaricio, residents Martin Draviers, Ed Armstrong, Jaclyn Lulett, Linda Barlow, these are against, and one business owner, Mary Lewis and Patricia Piero. So I think that's covered, anyone who submitted record.
And they're, yeah, they're all available on the website. You can uh find, find them in the the lower right portion, scroll down, all these, I read those letters online today, so they are there. The recording of the previous portion of the public hearing on this matter is also available online. You can listen to it in, in its entirety, even the parts that are not about this application, if you wish. And uh with that, we're at the point where um the, the commission has to make a determination if we need any additional info to make uh a decision on this application. And so do we need any inputs? Do we need any additional material submission from the applicant? In, in order to deliberate and eventually decide on this application? Do you have any more additional information you wish to submit this evening? Or then we get into asking for a continuance of, of this to a future date?
Correct. So we have not, we, we received the peer reviewer, Mr. Del Rio's comments yesterday afternoon. We responded, Mr. Stone, and we obviously need additional time to receive Mr. Del Rio's response to our response and see whether all of the traffic comments from the course of the peer review have been reviewed. I think that is the primary reason. If there is, we had a question about where the tax revenue can go, I'm happy to provide that statute. Um, if there are any other questions from the, from the commission members, um, those are the main thing.
Is it, is it, is the weather three percent goes relevant to the government commission deliberation? No, no, I don't think we do that.
Then, then we don't, we don't need to do that. Um.
Are you suggesting a certain date you'd like to continue to?
I was gonna say, my understanding was that um the uh October third meeting because of schedule issues um related to the next, okay.
So the zoning commission has to close the public hearing tonight. The applicant has offered to grant us an extension of the timeline to close or keep the public hearing open. Um, our next regular business meeting, not smoke on the water, is September nineteenth. My only concern is on the nineteenth, I know at least two seated members are not gonna be able to attend. And my suggestion and discussion with attorney Sutins was potentially to postpone till October third. That would give the traffic engineers enough time to go back and forth.
I'm not gonna be able to make.
Is that okay with the applicants? If we, so we have to ask the applicant for a, for a letter to grant us an extension of the timeline is October third, except for.
So, but I'm not gonna be able to make it October third. So I'd rather have it the nineteenth than we can use alternates, you know, I mean, that's so, or or we could, I don't know, but I'd like to, I'd like to just.
Right. So on October third, if we accept new info into the open public hearing and then close the public hearing, we do not have to make a decision.
Yeah, but he's not gonna.
On October third, we have another calendar to work with for a decision timeline.
So, so two, just two things. The first thing is will we have enough time for the comments from the applicant's traffic engineer to be submitted to our traffic engineer? That's why we had a little bit of gap from our last public hearing. So that they could respond in one week is probably not sufficient time. Um, I haven't told if we're gonna have a forum on the nineteenth. My concern was I know at least two members will not be here. So I don't know who's available on the nineteenth. And you're not available on the nineteenth?
Are you?
Which?
Are you available on the nineteen?
September, no.
Well, then we're not having it on the nineteen. So Bob. And John, so you four members were not available.
So at this point, additional traffic engineer discussions are, are, are part of, part of what's left, let's say. Can those discussions go back and forth to a stopping, can the discussion among traffic engineers go back and forth to a stopping point by October third?
That, yes, I was gonna say, based on where we are and and the understanding when Chris and I spoke earlier, and she alerted me to a potential forum issue for the, for the next meetings. Um, that's, that's why we check. I think based on where we are, we should be fine for October third. With all the traffic comments.
Hello, yeah, mom, I agree that October, that should.
Okay.
The other, the traffic engineers are in agreement. How rare is that? So the, the commission would request to have the applicant an extension of the timeline to keep the public hearing open through October third. Right?
October.
Right. And if the applicant would give it.
I will consent to that extension on the record and follow up with an email to Chris.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this time I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to October third, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Second, it's by Jerry Lewis, any discussion on the motion?
At your normal, at your regular meeting.
Anyway.
That starts at seven.
Right, seven P M.
All right, all in favor of continuing the public hearing on this matter to October third? This matter being fine titled. We have, have to do, have to do the. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing on fine titled dispensary application for special exception used for four thousand square foot of buildings, marijuana dispensary, and two thirty three box and control the second path forty four lot eleven. To our October regularly scheduled meeting of October third, twenty twenty two at seven P M in Town Hall, first floor conference room, three oh two Main Street, Old Tegra. Signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously five zero zero, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, we will see you on October third.
I just have one question, who's available on the nineteenth? Do we have a forum for the nineteenth? Because we had two more here. Mark and nineteen. Okay, so just so for any of the other public hearings, we can't continue for the nineteenth because we don't have a forum. So we already, we've established that, that's what got me worried initially, oh, because I started getting some emails saying I'm not gonna be at the. So there's no meeting on the nineteenth, or it doesn't appear that we have a forum, so. We had a.
We have less than that.
We had a preliminary discussion, that thing.
Okay.
All right, next on the agenda is, well, Matt, thank you for coming.
Thanks, you guys.
We'll be, we'll be in touch.
Fair enough. Enjoy.
All right, yeah.
Next on the agenda, public hearing, petition to Emmanuel Tiber zoning regulations, section sixty four and section eleven, fine regulation.
Excuse me, so we have other public hearings, if you could just bring the discussion outside, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Sixty four, four five, point three, and section eleven. Section sixty four, point three, point three, section sixty four.
No parking. Thank you.
Clarified language, for all districts, wall signs and other signs in section sixty four. New section sixty four, four nine. They're all sixty, sixty four, right. And the petitioner is the Old Tevere Architecture Review Board, an open public hearing today, enclosed by not later than October eleventh, it will be October.
So the chairman of the Architecture Review Board has been I was getting. So the chairman of the Architecture Review Board, who is a volunteer, has been patiently waiting in the hallway. Um, and she left about five to ten minutes ago. She has a work obligation in New York tomorrow. Um, and she was here to present the application. I can give you a brief overview. I mean, I think the Architecture Review Board would like to have some comments if we do have some preliminary feedback. Um, and I can enter what we have into the record for now. That we do have one member of the Architecture Review Board online. So the Architecture Review Board had some concerns regarding sign regulations. And that some of the applications and the sizes of signs that met the regulations um were not necessarily, you know, proportionate with wall sizes, were a little large. And the board put together some comments and then is proposing a regulation change to you to make those changes. Um, for some record keeping. Um, we did send out referrals and we have received um feedback from the Harbor Management Commission.
Good call.
The Office of Long Island Sound Programs, the Planning Commission, Connecticut Deep, the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments and Planning and Economic Development, I think I mentioned. I don't expect any other referrals. Uh, I can go through this with you, or I know you've all had some time to review it. You wanna provide some comments or, do you wanna comment? Do you wanna comment? Want to go through the whole? Well, I mean, I can, I can go through and review it, I'm just trying is to help out another commission that has spent a lot of time on this and they're gonna be continued till October third with a.
I was, I was surprised that they, that the referrals generated positive recommendations. And um, the E D, the E D C is, it included some positivity with regard to reduction in signs, sizes and.
So, I mean, I, I think part of it, and I know that I wasn't at the E D C meeting, but there was some discussion that by maintaining even smaller signs, people are using GPS, a lot more people come here as a tourist attraction. Um, because we're, we're a destination and trying to keep that destination feel. Um, so unfortunately, like I said, the, the chairman, um and the board had some very good points. So I don't know if there's any comments that you would like to provide them or how, how you'd like to proceed.
So the one comment about they just have them pre-colored, when it's like in a, when there's multiple businesses, that kind of bothered me a little bit, like that comment that some other commission made about the branding, like certain companies like to have their colors, you know, so that it bothered me a little bit too.
So, so the zoning commission doesn't regulate color, but in the past, we've had signs that had had red, orange, yellow, green, blue, purple, and it's just not very consistent. Um, I think the A R D um has had some examples where we have great architecture and then all of a sudden you have this hodgepodge of, of colored signs. So the thought was to maybe to, to encourage the commission to limit it so that at least if they were in the same color palette or, or consistent, that it would complement the architecture of the building.
Yeah, I, I had concerns about that because my impression of what zoning can regulate with regards to size, it's limited to size, height and location. And to limit color palette from location to location by a theme would be beneficial in terms of overall appearance. I don't think that's reg, something that zoning commission can regulate per se. We can make strong suggestions and try to get the net results, but I think is, is it legal?
So, we did, we did have our attorney review this. We're not specifying that every sign in town has to be magenta. It's giving those options and just limiting it so that, that it has an appearance to it that would match the architecture of the building and, and.
Are, are the choices of colors still open to the applicant? So we could still get those neon green on black sign, et cetera.
Right.
But it's only where there's four or more businesses.
And it would, correct, and it would be.
Means if there's three, they can do whatever that they want for colors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's legal, you do or don't.
I do not.
We, we've never been able to regulate color.
No, I, I would.
I could double check with our attorney that there wasn't an issue, it was a matter, we're not picking the colors, it's just the number.
Yeah, the number.
So now saying the specific color, we're saying three colors, any color in the spectrum.
One foreground, one background, one accent.
So it can be different on every sign.
And that would keep consistent.
That, that, that's the distinction. If you get three colors, you pick them. It might be ugly, but you're good.
I, I think if it hurts a business from being able to promote their, if they have logo colors, what if they don't happen to match up with one of the other four businesses? How did, who determines which colors they choose?
So there are shopping centers that the landlords actually specify a new, and sign plan. So for example, like seventy five Main Street, I know one you're talking about with the black and the green, the, the Seashell Plaza. Um, and what those landlords have done is they allotted the sign space per leased area given the sign size and said, okay, it could be, some are very detailed and said it can only be wood carved like Quarter Plaza or have that appearance. Or it's only a particular size. And another one to think about is the train station where all of the signs are consistent size. So a lot of the times the landlords do that because they spend a lot of time and effort coming to the commissions to have a good looking building and then all of a sudden there are signs that are, they're out of proportion. They're, they're made on a piece of plywood and spray. They're out of proportion and they're, they're made on a piece of plywood and spray painted. They're, they're just, they're not. In, in keeping with the character of the building. And, and I think that's where the Architecture Review Board is.
I think of a situation like my previous building, for instance, where there's, there are six illegal units, so potential of six businesses. What if those six businesses cannot come to a consensus as to what those three colors are?
I think this would be more for newer developments.
I understand, but that's just an example.
So I've had situations as the enforcement officer where the police have been called because people are fighting over. Sizes of sign, sign space. And this is, it, it can get very tricky and I think. In my opinion, having consistent sign plans for new developments is, is a positive.
Yeah.
Especially when we have facade renovations, like the one you were talking about with the black and the green.
Yeah.
Or for example, when Porter Plaza, if someone comes in for Porter Plaza. Or the train station, I always know it's going to be X size. That's the map and it's actually in their leases. For many of these, so it, it makes it so.
Those are great ideas.
The Architecture Review Board, we don't even refer them to them because it's already part of the set sign plan.
Yeah.
And we did that with the businesses on the side of libs.
Uh huh.
And there's a number of different ones. So, so I think that's. That's the theme is to try to continue to do that and have it consistent. And maintain, you know, beautiful buildings and then you have this hodgepodge of signs. So I think that's where they were going. Yes.
I can appreciate the positivity of the results of a theme in a multi-tenant development. And yet. I, I don't, I don't think zoning. Can be regulating. The colors for.
They're not really.
If there were five stores and one of them was the Dunkin' Donuts. You're going to get Dunkin' Donuts to give up the pink and orange in order to comply with the other colors that the majority and or the property owner?
I remember this commission many years ago had a Home Depot that had no orange on it, so. Just to kind of saying.
It, it's happened. At one point our Walmart had no blue on it. Remember it was?
Yeah.
Brown.
Yeah.
I'd like to see examples of. Where it works.
Okay.
Madison Stop and Shop, is that the theme sign place?
I think it is, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Somerset Square was one of the ones that was brought up in an ARV meeting. Very small, limited, consistent signs, so I'm sure the board can. Provide you with that. Any other comments?
As a previous business owner, I think it limits the identity of the business, which can become challenging.
For, for this change, any comments on the other? And just trying to get them some feedback since there's not going to be a.
I was surprised that the economic development portion had support for smaller signs. Especially wall signs. With regard to our calculations, to go from. Measure height of twelve feet down to ten feet. And keep. Keep to twenty percent or even reduce it. So we're talking about considerably smaller signs. Except for the overly large signs that we have in town, Staples pylon sign, Staples front. The front of the, the wall sign. West Marine sign is, is, if you look at the scale of the sign on the building, it, it, it really appeals to me. It's not too big. And it's certainly not too small, but it makes the building have more class than if it was a hundred square feet. So. And, 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 you know, so with our regulations regarding the uninterrupted length of a wall being forty feet before two foot difference. And the sign calculations being measured on that wall. Right, then the maximum size you could get at twenty percent of forty feet. That's one fifth of forty, that's eight. Measure to a height of twelve feet, that's eight times twelve, that's ninety-six. You can only get a ninety-six square foot sign on a forty foot wall. That's, that's the max, so. The fact that we have a regulation backup that says a hundred square feet is prohibited. It still has some squishy four feet, four square feet in there, but. We shouldn't be seeing applications for signs bigger than ninety-six square feet anyway.
So the Architecture Review Board. Does see signs for pre-existing non-conforming buildings that don't have that jog every forty square feet. Or every forty feet, I'm sorry. So I think that was one of the thoughts. Is to try to help to limit those. Because not every building in town meets the current design standards and architectural standards and I know that.
All right.
They've struggled with a number of.
So, well.
Existing building.
Wall was longer than forty feet, then you reduce the, the height to, to ten feet and the percentage or whatever. It seems. There, there ought to be a. Forty feet or less of a wall ought to, ought to be a good thing. If you got a longer wall, you don't get as big a sign.
Well, I think the, the issue is that there, not every. Building has. That forty feet.
Forty foot, wow, yeah.
So that's. The reason for their suggestion is to try to, when you have a hundred feet or whatever, and I'm not doing the math. I know we have the cap of ninety-nine before you become a billboard. But, but I think that, that was one or the other reason. So when you have. A wall sign, window signs, freestanding signs, and you add that all together and you have larger buildings. I think that was part of the, the concern and reason behind the regulation.
I have a question on the, the three different types of signs, with window signs, the freestanding signs and the internally illuminated signs. There's nothing tying, so they're, they're stipulating that they need to be three colors. But there's nothing tying the three different types of signs for the same set of buildings to the same set of three colors.
So it's not always the same set of, the three colors has to do. When you have four or more.
Right, so say if you have a plaza with four tenants.
And that was wall sign.
Well, there's window signs, there are internally illuminated signs and there's freestanding signs. All which have that same additional. But there's nothing saying that those three colors have to be consistent between those different types of signs for the same plaza.
It's only related to.
It's specific to each sign type.
Shopping center signs, they're called. So a shopping center with four or more businesses to have some type of a unique. facade.
No, I, I'm looking deeper in. So if you go to sixty-four point five point three. A six. It goes to turn it into a full-size business district. You go to Zebra Inn and it's calling out the same for. Shopping Center B two and the gateway will be four districts. And it's, it's specifically calling out different types of signs. But it's not saying that the color can be consistent across the different types of signs for the same plaza.
I think they're saying the facade, the, the shopping center sign.
But it's, it's not saying that specifically. It's just same sign type.
Right.
So you could have an internally illuminated sign at the front of the plaza. With different colors in the window decals with different colors than the freestanding sign.
I think they're talking more the permanent consistent sign band, so for the.
Exactly, it's specific as to, is it cohesively three colors? Or is it by sign type? Three, that's listed right now.
By sign type.
So you could have three sets of three colors. You following wrong? If there's those three different types.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to present tonight, so I'm regretting, but I'm trying to help them out to, to get some feedback.
Different types of signs within a plaza or formal businesses, theoretically, they could be three sets of three different colors. There needs to be consistency if they're looking.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I think if you look at it and it should probably be revisited, you would have your permanent signs that would have consistent. But if you had an open sign. Or a cannabis sign, it could have different colors in the window.
It, it's something to ask them to, to look at.
Okay.
To me, it, it comes across as consistently.
You have the freestanding signs with the structure, reinforcing them to put a border with plantings. What percentage have that today? And this is a new, so anything new has to have this? That's what you're saying?
So the Architecture Review Board, there's a lot of signs that are. Stick in the ground signs or freestanding signs that are just stuck in rocks. Dirt and their thought was. Asphalt.
Now you want them to put. A border of white. Flowers and lights and plantings.
Sounds nice.
Yeah.
If you're not paying for it.
Not to the person.
And you got upkeep it, you got to water it, you got to do everything else. It's a lot to ask.
Eventually it becomes just dirt, dirt again.
Yeah.
I'm just.
ARB recommends vegetation around the base of the sign and yet planning in the EDC are in favor of hardscape like cement pad. I try to think of a, a sign with a hardscape at the bottom and why would that be a good thing compared to a sign with vegetation of. Some low shrub that doesn't obscure the sign?
Well, I think too is that when you have a situation where you have a sign in the middle of asphalt. People just tend to drive into it, at least if they go and bump in to the little wall around it. It, it tends to keep. These are just practical. There, there is one plaza in town that the, the owner of the plaza will not allow the tenants to have a freestanding sign. Because it was in asphalt and people kept hitting it, so he said, I'm not going to maintain it. So you're not going to have a freestanding sign anymore.
That's fair.
And. It may help to improve some of the non-conforming sites before they come in and. Before this commission, when they're required to have a landscaping buffer and many things that are currently not.
Well, somebody wants to protect their signs and their hardscape, they could put bollards around it. That would look awful. Unless there was vegetation that obscured the bollards.
Well, right now they could put bollards in asphalt and.
Yeah.
Protect the sign.
How much longer are we going to spend on this?
Well, well, this is a petition just from another board and that's why they're, they're looking. They spend a lot of time. Working on this, so it means if we need to give them some preliminary feedback. Before the next meeting, which is October third. I think we would appreciate that.
There's one old typo. On sixty-four point three point eleven, number two, the sign must, should be a must. Sign. Must be a bit. He could say point three, point. Sixty-four. Number two, the sign must be a best. Okay, and then over the level. A sign instead of a sign.
Oh, it's sculpture.
It's putting in.
So the text in the signs. Those are existing design standards. That are encouraged. I do know that there was quite a bit of discussion about them, but the ARV was trying to achieve a few quick fixes without. Trying to rewrite the regulations, so they thought that they would bring these forward. For your consideration. And possible adoption. I think at some point we do need to revisit the entire section. In its entirety. We're a little busy right now.
The parent is, is getting very restrictive. On a lot of assignment, because it's reduction not only in height, but it's also in coverage.
Yeah.
And color. And color and illumination.
And that's, I think, what they're looking to achieve.
Not sure if that's, do we want all of this to look the same one?
I don't think it's going to make them look the same, which is going to be, and we. We have certain hassles on sign sizes in certain ways that we measure and I think. You know, we've, I know the ARV recently had an application for. A very nice business, very attractive building. And originally it had a very small sign and all of a sudden that sign doubled. And really didn't match the architecture of the building. And that was something. That they were concerned with, that you could have one sign on Route one with fifty square feet of signage. Right up against Boston Post Row, meeting that setback. So if you're saying it's too restrictive, is there any way we could say how so other than?
I don't know, some of it's fifty percent reductions. That's significant, fifty percent in some cases is significant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I. Think that's overreaching.
Especially when you consider, and going back to the colors, signs that incorporate more than four businesses, fifty square feet is not a lot of space for four businesses.
No.
Listened, no.
Well, no, it's on the walls.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You're saying in a pre-stander, but I think they were looking more to towards walls.
Again, it, it doesn't stipulate that though.
Some cases it does, and other cases. That, how do we proceed from the here? Do we?
Well, this is simply just given the suggestions. I mean.
So this, so this is a petition, this is a, a public hearing, as I said, I'm just helping ARV out. Yeah, and I'm sure the.
I think it's, that more consistency is good.
Yeah. So the ARB gets the feedback. Did they get, did they get guidance or preferences or did they just get the? It needs to be changed. If we give them a direction to go or? Or is it going to be thumbs up or thumbs down on something each, each, each individual?
I think you share the comments that we've spoken about this evening.
Yeah.
And then possibly if we fit them into October third.
We're going to have to continue it because this is a public hearing. This is an actual application.
Yeah, we would have to.
So you might have to continue it until October third.
Because I like to hear from them, yeah.
Well, I think this will give them some opportunity to make some revisions, so I think the more feedback now.
Right.
Okay.
Because they may have to ask for an extension of the public hearing.
Right. And, and it would. It would be, uh, true, it would be better.
Ed Armstrong on the Architecture Review Board.
I think it would be better if you got it in a format that was more typical of how we usually get text change applications where. We, we don't get the existing applications with. The modifications mixed in like this.
It's typically how we do receive them.
Well.
It's the entire.
Well, yeah. It's just a lot.
It's just a lot because it's, it's got the entire set of regulations versus.
Does Ed want to talk?
It's just kind of hard to put it, I mean, we can just go through and just do wall signs and cut all of that out, but to put it into.
Right.
Context, we thought it made more sense to.
So there's some appearing.
And, and is on the Architecture Review.
Public hearing, uh.
Ed Armstrong.
As an applicant.
Okay, go ahead. Ed Armstrong.
Unmute Ed.
Okay, how is that sound? Is that better?
Yeah.
All right, this is Edward Armstrong. I'm the vice chair in the ARB. Should I speak as a, as a private, private citizen or the vice chair?
I think he can speak as the, the vice chairman since you're part of the application.
To, to answer Bob's question, we would like some feedback. Keep in mind, we're trying to get consistency and to help beautify the town. Parts of the town are looking pretty shoddy when it comes to group signs. A really good sign exam. A really good sign example was the new auto mall on the, uh, west side of, was it one fifty-four, you know, o- over near the Jeep dealer. That, that's a brand new sign, it has maybe two or three colors, it's consistent, it looks great. Some of the signs that are deteriorating in town have multi-colors, you know, one big billboard sign like Stop and Shop sign near, uh, Walmart. That, it, it, there's, there's multiple colors, it's looking pretty, I'll say, you know, not, not beautiful. So we're, we're trying for consistency, we're trying to make the town keep its, its charm. You know, the old say of charm, so definitely we would need, uh, we would like to have your input. I, I'm not sure if we can have a joint meeting, maybe, uh, with Emily, uh, leading the charge. Uh, but that, yes, s- some, some feedback and some mutual feedback would be appreciated, I think.
So, Ed, Ed, just to clarify, this is the actual, this is an application from the architecture, so we can't have a joint meeting on it, you have a live application in front of zoning commission, so that's why I, I don't want to speak a hundred percent on behalf of the board, but I'm just trying to get some feedback.
Yes.
To A R V on this, so if there's anything else you can think of, or if I've misspoken anyway.
No, you, you, you were right on, like, like, you know, uh, freestanding signs, they can be, if you take a look at them around town, they can get pretty messy looking. You know, the, 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 the posts start to deteriorate, there's no painting on the post. There's nothing done at the base of the post, so, yeah, does it look better to have some shrubs at the base of the post and maybe some bricks? Yeah, it looks a lot better. Um, so, yeah. I'm not sure what kind of feedback uh, we, we can anticipate. But, uh, you know, we're, we're, it, it's all about consistency and beautification of the town.
And here, and here back from the A R B. My point about the application format was, was along the lines of section sixty-four point three point nine, vertical projection fifth root. There is no change to be made to that, it's going to be retained, therefore it doesn't need to be a part of the application.
Okay.
It should be for the, the words that are going to be deleted or changed or new. I don't need.
Uh, so I think that the
I know, I, I
The reasoning was because that has to do with the standards for all districts, so if you're looking at a freestanding sign and you're not changing the post height, but you're changing the size of the freestanding sign, but we can eliminate all of that in. Yeah, okay.
So we'll continue.
So are we continuing the public hearing?
Yes, yeah.
All right. We have a motion to continue the public hearing on the petition to amend the Old Trafford Zoning Regulation sixty-four and eleven on sign regulations proposed by the Architecture Review Board.
I don't know if you want anyone else in the audience to comment.
Have anything to say?
Do you guys have anything to say regarding the sign application stuff?
No.
No, no. I'll do it, I'll do it.
All right, you're not reading.
No, I'm just, there's other people online, I figured that, it's the more feedback we can get for the board.
And just for the, to, to, to continue this applica- this, this public hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Old Trafford Zoning Commission on Monday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, let, no?
No, because we're not going to.
October third. Three, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Old Trafford Town Hall, three oh two, please speak first floor conference rooms.
Second. Done.
All in favor of continuing the public hearing on the sign by A R B? Stay on. Let's carry unanimously, thank you, continue.
Okay.
Next one is in the petition to amend the Old Trafford Zoning Regulation section fifty-three. Standards for motor vehicles for separation distance for fuel pumping stations. Four options proposed. First Amendment, B two and B four district, fifty-three B one, fifty-three one B. To allow one additional motor vehicle fueling station within a thousand feet of any pump or other. Second Amendment, B four district only, fifty-three point one. To allow one additional motor vehicle fueling station within a thousand feet of any pump or other M V F S on any other lot. Third Amendment, B two, B four at I. Fifty-three point one point B, the one thousand foot radius restriction shall be reduced to within five hundred feet when located in a shopping center. And Fourth Amendment, B two and B four, fifty-three point B. The one thousand foot radius restriction shall be reduced to within five hundred feet of any pump or other motor vehicle fueling station on any other lot. Petitioner Big White, Rude in the Maxis Place LLC, Agent Attorney David Royce. Mr. Royce.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, before you, uh, formally open the public hearing, uh, may I, uh, suggest that, um, I be given a, uh, up until ten fifteen to make the presentation, put items into the record. And at that point, uh, I'd be happy to conclude and have this continued to, uh, October, uh, third, I think is uh, the date. I don't want to
Okay.
do that without, uh, having, uh, the commission being, uh.
Falling asleep? And I, I understand, just so that you do know, now on October third, you have the Gateway Regulation Change. The A R V petition.
Yeah.
Fine settle a preliminary discussion with another marijuana or cannabis, if we're calling it marijuana. Applicant and the Bennys. So you're going to have a pretty.
Yeah, well, tonight is pretty.
Yeah, good.
Yes.
Go David.
There's a consensus among the commissioners that if we vote to ten fifteen, that continuance to October third would follow.
Understood, uh, so the public hearing is open, I understand, as the chairman, and my name is David Royce. I'm, uh, the attorney for the petitioners, Gateway Food Services Inc. and Maxis Place LLC, um, could you check and see where they're at tomorrow and assume?
Oh, he's there, can just promote. Yeah, I seen him.
Good, okay, okay, and, uh, uh, he, uh, here is, uh, Ron Lyman. Who is the, uh, Principal of Maxis Place LLC. Uh, by way of background, um, you adopted a regulation um, in which the sale of motor vehicle fuel as a principal use is now permitted by special exception in the B four and the B, uh, two districts, um, as a principal use. And in the I district as accessory to a service station. Um, and, uh, that was passed in January of, of this year, twenty twenty-two. In May, the commission did, um, uh, uh, of its own, uh, application, uh, some housekeeping with respect to automotive use, special standards, um, by including, uh, uh, motor vehicle, uh, uh, fueling stations in the bottom motor use of section. It, it wasn't in there before, but then specifically it was, uh, put in there in section fifty-three, which added further requirements. And in particular, in subsection B of section fifty-three, there is a requirement that there be a separation distance of one thousand feet between pumps of any fuel, uh, facility, any gas station. Um, that, uh, is, uh, contrary to the, uh, preliminary plan which Maxis Place had, uh, and Big White presented. Where they show on, uh, the Maxis Place, uh, property uh, that they intended to put in a convenience store with, uh, also with gas and uh, that, um, as it turns out, is five hundred and thirty-seven feet from the, uh, pumps at the, uh, food bank. Uh, so Sico's pump. So, uh, we met on a preliminary basis and preliminary um, we, uh, indicated that a desire just to eliminate that restriction in its entirety. But when we met with the zoning, uh, commission, the zoning commission, um, uh, I got the impression that the zoning commission did not feel like capable of, uh, elimination of that, uh, restriction. Um, was, was a good idea, we want to vote like, or fine. But, uh, uh, we decided after that, uh, meeting, with the preliminary meeting to go with a modification of the particular, uh, restriction. And if you go to modify it, there's multiple ways in which you can, uh, go ahead and modify it. Um, we looked at four uh, uh, modifications or options. And that's what we, uh, basically applied for. And those, uh, of four options, which are part of the application um, uh, meet, uh, the needs of the conditions. Uh, they would be able to go seeking the special exception. They got a regulatory situation, they have to go through a special exception from you. They have to go to, uh, O S T, they get a permit, they got to go to the D O T for, uh, the permits and, and such. This would simply enable them, uh, to be able to meet the requirements of the zoning regulations and apply for a, a special exception. Um, why did we do, uh, four? Um, we needed to do a public notice, uh, for the, uh, which included the properties that might be affected. And we didn't want to get into a situation where, uh, the commission thought, well, why don't you do this instead of what we proposed? And then have a notice requirement where we'd have to go back and start from the beginning. So what we did is we, uh, uh, have applied for uh, four, uh, uh, amendments. And the, uh, we're any one of them works for us. And if, uh, uh, the commission, uh, feels that, uh, uh, there's only one of them that it would wish to, uh, approve, uh, then it would be prepared to, uh, withdraw the other ones. Very quickly, I, I assume everyone has, uh, a copy of the, of the amendments. That's good. Okay, the First Amendment, uh, simply put, the First Amendment uh, allows one additional motor vehicle fueling station within a one thousand foot radius. Um, the Second Amendment, uh, the Second Amendment, uh, uh, provides that um, uh, the restriction is a thousand feet except uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, number two, that, um, except in the Gateway and, uh, the four district. One, um, one additional can be located, so it, it restricts it to the, uh, particular, uh, distance. The Third Amendment, um, provides that it would be, um, basically, uh, eliminating the, uh, the, uh, uh, thousand, making it, uh, five hundred, but only in shopping centers. Fourth one, uh, simply eliminates the, uh, thousand, reduces it to five hundred uh, five hundred feet. Um, these are not all inconsistent, but there's certainly, uh, some differences. Um, uh, with respect to each one of those, each one of those options. Um, um, the, uh, I'd like to, uh, also, uh, provide to the, uh, uh, to the board. Um, basically, I'm going to give you these, um, and the theory of pictures worth a thousand, or as it was called, for a thousand foot radius. I want to make this as part of, part of the record. When it is. Okay, and, and basically, um, to go over through this, uh, uh, quickly, there's an explanation on the front of it, an explanation, um, was just in case, uh, uh, you just got this in the record, you would have an explanation of what this, uh, uh, exhibit is, you would be able to, uh, review it. And what it does, it shows, starting off on that first page, it basically is an overhead. Um, the circle is somewhat difficult to, to see because it goes off the, uh, the page. But that circle is a thousand foot, um, radius. Um, and radius, the radius is the, um, the prong of the circle, so it's a, the, the circle is
A thousand foot diameter and a five hundred radius.
Yeah, so the radius you still have, basically, we would have the, uh, five hundred, uh, uh, radius, you'd have a thousand foot diameter, the thousand foot radius of two thousand foot diameter, so it, the circle is big. So that shows you that by actual, um, engineer amendment, where we would propose to have the pumps. The pump nearest to the pumps on the, uh, food bag that's a Sico station is five hundred thirty-seven feet. So, that's why the five hundred, uh, one is important. If you go to the next page, it shows you the same thing, but it's showing you, um, the B four area that would be affected, because you can't have, um, uh, a gas, um, fuel station within the, uh, anything but the B four and the B two. They can't have it in B three, B one, for any residential zone. So this is shows on the second page where it goes, starting traveling, uh, eastward. And then on the next page, we, we pick up, it's a shorter page, we pick up um, going east and again shows, uh, the B four area around the, uh, uh, uh. This is, the circle is one thousand.
That's the current regulation now.
That's the current regulation. Okay, so on the second one, as we go to, um, going east in that B four area, there is, uh, there isn't any, um, existing, uh, gas station, uh, after you get past, uh, the Sico station. So if you kind of take a look on the zoning map, you have the, the B four area. And then as you start going on the Boston Post Road from Westford, you have B four pretty much on the north side. Um, you have, uh, this is Bennys, a little more extension down on the south side.
Yes.
Then you have, uh, basically some commercial law, B four along small properties along the, that's, that's, uh, southerly side. But once you get past, um, and I And essentially at. Schoolhouse Road, your B four ends. So the next sheet shows you basically the area. Going over, excuse me, when you get over where Schoolhouse Road. And it shows that B four area, you then get into the B three. And residential, pretty much the B three, it's not allowed into B three. So there isn't, this regulation has no effect on a residential zone going basically from Schoolhouse. And until you get up to the Boston Post Road. That shows on the next sheet, it shows where the Bennys is. So this shows that is an area where there. It shows the thousand foot radius and we B two area where you could have. You can't have a gas station now, through this regulation. Depending upon which one you did, you used it through the five hundred feet you you could. The next, the next sheet, now you get into basically. The next is Minniki. And Minniki does not have operational pumps. But similar to Adelman Service Station, there's the potential. Because they are not being of the use, so I have included them as being. Affected by this regulation and as you can see, it's about five hundred feet. From Minniki to the mobile station on the corner of Elm Street and Boston. The next, the next sheet shows Minniki being mobile is now in the center. Of the thousand foot radius. And the mobile, it's five hundred feet from Minniki. And then it's eight hundred feet until you get to Adams. Next, the next sheet basically shows Adelman in the middle. It's eight hundred feet from mobile, it's three hundred and forty feet from Sunoco. Then you say, you see also the. You'll go up and it doesn't quite get to Cumberland Farms. Which is on the next sheet. Where from Adelman's, it's street forty to the Sunoco, Sunoco's in the middle now. Sunoco is five twenty five to Cumberland Farms. You then. Basically go over the railroad bridge and then you find the Sunoco. And the, there's also, and Sunoco is. Excuse me, this is, the sheet is before Sunoco, Bill is to Cumberland Farms, sorry. Then you go over the bridge and you have the, basically the mobile station. Is five hundred, just exactly five hundred feet from classic, classic carriage and. Those, then you put the, basically. The last sheet is not at the same scale because the assessors' maps are not the same scale. You basically, that shows you the, the shell carriage, classic carriage. Shell station and its distance back to, back to mobile. The significance of all this is, is you take a look that. Any of these regulations will not have a significant. Impact to increase the potential number of, number of stations. I am pretty much at the end of my time. At one minute and the, I would like to have put in the record. The approval from planning commission, consistent plan, conservation and development. Economic Development Commission. The River Todd, so no negative impacts with Westford, the Long Island Sound. Deep, it's consistent with all their policies and. Generally consistent, surprising, and no further comments other than say was generally consistent. And then also we have the. Gateway's kind of interesting because what Gateway said, what there's some small B two areas. Over within the Gateway, a little bit up here, B two, within Gateway and they said. Keep it a B four so we don't have to deal with. And so that's, that's their recommendation and the. Lastly, I'm going to put in, Matt is here.
Two more comments, so you have a favorable referral from the Harbor Management Commission?
I thought they had no comment.
Or no comment, I guess.
Okay.
Again, you didn't add that one in, the other one is. So I was trying to make sure we get them all in now, so we don't have to do it next time.
Let me give you Matt DeMoor's. Letter to the.
September seventh.
Okay, and I'm just going to conclude so we can continue. Obviously, we'll take any questions or what have you when we get continued, but the, the biggest points in his letter. Are the paragraphs when he said the importance of this regulation due to the shopping center. Or its continued vitality in today's world, what is happening. And I just say the only other recommendation was by Paul Aface. Planning Commission, he did project, he said, he thought. Want to be in the regulation, the option, just make it five hundred feet in shopping centers was a good option. So I leave that to you, thank you very much.
The fourth amendment text doesn't have any underlines.
That there is.
There's another, another version?
Yeah, the one what happened is if we get the one off the website. One which has the signature at the bottom of the page, which is the correct one.
Carisment doesn't have any pumps anymore, they have vacuum, but I think they, they were.
And one of the, the thing is the old regulation just said pumps. And the amendment we're putting are fuel pumps, so it would also not involve. The cleaning pumps or vacuums.
Without further ado. I move to continue the petition to amend the old typical zoning regulations. Section fifty three standard for motor vehicles for separation of distance for fuel pumping stations. To October third, twenty twenty,七月七点，town hall, for conference, three or two main stage, Old Sabre. Any discussion on motion, although in favor of continuing the public hearing on this matter to October third.
Yeah, just don't leave because, yeah, I have the smoke on the water, the stuff, yeah. Perched grounds, I think you're going to get others, but at least then that way if you want to dig into it a little bit early. You'll have that, the first night of the public hearing and that was scheduled for September twenty sixth. And the applicant requested to continue that. They needed a little bit more time. Till October eleventh, which would be six o'clock at the high school. I'm just trying to spread the word because I know people have been asking when that hearing is going to start and we've kind of given some tentative dates. So. Yeah, that, staff report quickly, at our last meeting, there was a discussion. About Sabre Village Senior Housing Complex and the ARPA application. I believe I did copy you on that application and I see that Elizabeth Stefan is here tonight. I'm assuming that's why she stayed up this late with us. And the discussion here is the pavilion, there were some questions about how to get to the pavilion. And she sent the application, concrete walkway, we originally thought of constructing a wood plank walkway. For a beach look, but soon realized it was not feasible as weeds would grow between the planks, necessitating chemical weed killer. This would not be smart in an area near the Martian Water Force Assist chemicals released. Furthermore, many of our residents use walkers, motorized scooters or wheelchairs, a plank walkway would not be safe for them. The slope of the walkway would be in the area of one inch to one foot, for every inch of rise of the walkway would be one foot long. This walkway would also need a railing system of some type so our visually handicapped residents would not fall off. The interior of the pavilion would be furnished with picnic style tables, ADA compliance of wheelchair scooters. And walkers would walk over it. And at our last meeting, there was a discussion that the addition of the pavilion would be a modification to the special exception. And there were some questions about the walkway, so.
Concrete?
Concrete, and I don't know, Liz Stefan, if she's still awake. Just muted her, or she's muted, if you want to add anything to this.
No, I think we answered that, the question. It has to be concrete so that the walkers and the electric scooters. Don't get stuck, we are aware some of our residents are visually handicapped. So it has to have a, some kind of a railing system, it'll be probably nothing more than. Thin pylons and rope just to keep them on the walkway.
So I guess the question is, does this address your comment and is this still a modification to the special exception? Permit, it was a twenty eight by sixteen pavilion.
Address the comment, yeah.
Yeah.
You addressed the comments, yeah.
Okay, so then it's still a modification to the special exception that was deemed the last application or the last. So it's four hundred and forty eight square. So this would be minor? Sure.
Yeah, mine.
It's four hundred and forty eight square feet, did I address everything, Liz?
Yep.
All right, thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Good night, Liz. So the Oyster River Market, ten fifty seven Boston Post Road, sent me a request, I believe I forwarded to you. What they would like to do is they're currently permitted as a retail store selling sandwiches and other to-go items. In the front, there's an overhang. That has always, for years, had corn and other goods outside for sale at retail, what they would like to do. Is enclose that so they can have a little bit more area to move during the winter months. And try to keep the business open. Yeah, longer, so it would be within this existing coverage, the existing footprint, they would not be adding seating. And so the question is, how would you, like, you can handle this? Right? Right. So the next one, and I think it was E fifteen, I left my printout upstairs, Boston Post Road, I sent you. An email, the former B J M pump. Tesla's next store is just. Oh, next store. On the corner of King and Boston Post Road, that property was purchased. I did speak with the property owner initially, I told them most likely zoning would be required, he wasn't sure what he was going to do. The building official has stopped by there several times, he removed the mafia blocks and replaced them with posts. And he hasn't returned for zoning, the building official has reminded of this, him of this. And he then sent an email to the building official, said, well, he has tenants to move in. That's the email that you forwarded to us, yes, so the. Property is located in the pedestrian node. It formerly housed many different businesses such as Remax Office, there was some doctors offices. And the proposal now is to have doctors offices and, or offices. Or leased space, it's not really particular, and then to move a retail barber shop there. So the question is, is this a change of use that requires a special exception? Wasn't all that already there at one point? Well, no, like, wasn't there a? There was never retail? There wasn't a dentist there or something before? But that's office. Oh, oh, okay. So they modified, obviously, the mafia blocks were put there for a reason, it's nice to see them go. And they've restripped the parking lot and done a number of different things, so the question is. This is in the pedestrian node. What was the reason that there was a problem before, was it because somebody wouldn't give somebody a right of way? It was that people. Yeah, with the restaurant, yeah. So the property was sold to a different property owner, the folks who were looking at that decided not to go forward. The new owner removed the concrete block and then put in the wood posts. So I'm not sure, it'll look nice. Oh, do we want to see them? Yeah. Yeah, so.
They need you to come in.
Is a modification to the special exception, that was my feeling, but as you could see in the email.
Even if there's no change in the envelope of the building and it's only interior walls snuffling and stuff. It's a change of use and we have a lot of non-conformities there. The object is to reduce the non-conformities, making it better.
Yeah. Okay, so full survey plan, so that's where I was leaning towards until there was some question. So I said, well, I will bring it for an answer. Okay, other than that. Your next meeting is canceled, I guess. Your October thirty, third meeting is going to be an adventure. Can't be worse than tonight. In my thinking, October eleventh then would be your first night of smoke, if they can. Six o'clock at the high school. And then what I've done is, we've already posted that we, we scheduled the first public hearing, the applicant requested to cancel. So we've been spreading the word and putting it right on the edge of the request of the applicant. We're just going to continue and then I'll have someone go post that on the high school and then.
Do you think you can, yep, want you to return on?
I don't know.
That's a potential.
The last meeting we had, but then we beat the police commission and had 100 and almost 150 people on Zoom. On Zoom, yeah, for the, the last application, so that's why I'm being a little bit cautious, I was a little concerned tonight. But, you never really know how to judge. And I think that that's all I have, right?
Well, will that meeting, the first special meeting, be virtual as well?
It's all being in person.
Certainly in person. That's better, I think, yes.
So I think it's 700 we can hold at the high school, there's room to social distance. Um, there'll be a monitor set up, people can come and talk to a speaker, I know the applicants talked to the school. So we'll go from there.
So we'd be like in front of the state, not outside?
And we'd be separated enough from people that can't.
Does that have to be the change?
Check here? Oh, good. Thank you. Well, we'll limit their time.
Caveat, agenda, so I'm going to put a little caveat on the agendas, um, just saying if there happens to be a COVID uptick, and if there's some type of a state or school mandated change that we're going to have to come here, I just don't think with the applicant's team and the amount of people that are going to come out in favor, you know, we may have a room capacity issue if people don't want to join these, and so that's.
And they will have a complete application?
So, um, I'm going to hand you their, uh, their application, I've written a report.
Oh, good.
It's eight pages long. And the commissions all can determine, make that determination, but I don't want to get into any of that, since we have a public hearing scheduled, then, yeah. Um, at least you could get started with. Motion to adjourn.
Certainly, thank you.